Hello and good evening, everyone. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm the chairman of the Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to our Zoom hearing for Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals Agenda Meeting, December 14th, 2021. It is the appointed hour of 7:00 PM. So we usually give a few moments to allow attendees to get settled, get logged on in case there's any login difficulties. We want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to get connected and get ready. I will typically, as we start to see the attendees begin to fill in, and I'm watching that happen now, I'm going to take a moment and just go through a quick process of what we do here at the ZBA and what the flow of this evening will be. We have a few applications that are on the agenda that have, we have, for which we've received requests for continuances. Just in the interest of, I think, courtesy and economy, we try to take care of those first in case folks in the attendees, members of the public are here to either hear or speak in connection with those applications. We don't drag you out for the entirety or, you know, an hour or however long the meeting is only to find out that the matter's going to be continued. Before we get into that, we're going to start with our roll call. I'm going to introduce the members of the board. I'll then go through a quick sort of snapshot, a bit of a lay of the land that I like to do. For those of you that are new to the ZBA or any public hearing, especially one conducted via Zoom, basically a quick snapshot of the rules of the road so that you can familiarize yourself with the process and the process by which we attempt to conduct the business that is on our agenda for this evening. So without further ado, I'm going to take a moment and introduce our board. We'll then go through a roll call, establish a quorum to determine that we have the legal minimum necessary to conduct zoning board business this evening. Once we establish that, we will, I'll go through the quick layout of the flow of the evening and then we'll get right into one request for a minor modification before we go into the public hearings. And if you want to follow along, just simply go to the Newbury Report, the City of Newbury Report's website. You can go to Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals. There's a link to the agenda. You can follow along via the agenda. And I'll also point out that the city's website has quick links directly to the most recent materials that are being followed, that have been filed, although all of those will be put up and shared as a screen so that anyone who's logged in, except perhaps those that have called in via phone, you won't have any ability to see what's being presented. But everyone, every application that's being presented, any materials that are being referenced, those will be published up on the screen so that everyone can follow along and see what is, what's being presented to the board. So with that, I'm going to quickly introduce the board and call the roll. We'll get things started. So calling the role of the Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals, just please respond, members of the ZBA, by either saying present or here. Mr. Mark Moore.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Stephen Delisle was absent this evening. So Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Walter Shannon.
Here.
Gregory Bennett. Oh, Greg, if you could unmute your mic, please.
Yep, present, excuse me.
Thank you. We can see your presence. So we're going to, we're going to take, we're going to take the Zoom screens word for it. I'm Rob Champetti. I'm present. So we have one, two, three, four, five members of the ZBA that are present. That is a quorum. We can go ahead and conduct our business of the evening. I'm also going to, because we have five members of the ZBA, we will have five voting members and the five voting members for all applications this evening, and that's mostly a legal disclosure, will be myself, Mr. Mark Moore, Mr. Ken Swanton, Mr. Walter Bud Shannon, and Mr. Gregory Bennett. Now, to get into the lay of the land, for those of you not familiar with zoning board, the way we operate our business is typically by modified Robert's Rules of Order, and that is to say that we will begin every application. I will read the legal notice. I typically read the legal notice by description. That's what was published, both in the newspaper as well as what was sent out to any of others. It's the legal notice that describes the docket number, the applicant by name, as well as the applicant's representative, whether it's a, an attorney, a law firm, an architect, engineer, what have you, whomever is going to be presenting on behalf of the applicant, as well as a brief description of what the relief being sought by the applicant. We'll just simply say that this is an application for a special permit or a special permit for nonconformities or variance or what have you. And then a descriptor that will describe specifically what's being asked, an addition of a new porch, you know, et cetera. So that's how every application will be presented by me, after which I will turn over the virtual floor to the applicant or the applicant's representative to present the application to the board members. This is the section during which the applicant will, or the applicant's representative will describe and present everything that the applicant wishes members of the ZBA to hear, see, and experience. And every member of the public in attendance will also be able to listen and hear as well. As soon as that's completed, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, at which point we go to the public comment section. At public comment, you'll see a slide that will be put up by Mr. Andy Port, our planning director. That slide is something that you may have seen before. It simply lays out a quick snapshot of the, I guess, the rules of courtesy that we ask every member of the public to try to hold yourselves accountable to. That is to say that we ask that you give your name and address for our keeper of the minutes, who by the way is Ms. Gretchen Joy, who I failed to introduce, along with this evening Caitlin Sullivan, our planning, our city planner, and of course, Mr. Andy Port, our planning director. Ms. Gretchen Joy will be keeping the record. So it's important that you give your name and your address so that she can record your comments. You needn't fall into any column of pro or con, for or against. Just simply, you'll click to the bottom of your Zoom screen. You'll see an icon that says raise hand. You'll raise your hand for us, at which point I'll recognize you and I'll just be going in order as I see them. And then our moderator will unmute your mic. I'll let you know that you have the floor and that's really your go. We ask that you kindly try to keep your comments tailored to within two minutes. That's mostly out of a courtesy to all of those from whom we wish to hear comments. We want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard. So we do ask that you, you try to adhere to that. I don't police it incredibly strictly. I try to apply as much discretion as is appropriate each and every time so that we can hear as much as we can each and every time. If it seems to be going long, I will gently and politely try to queue to, to let you know that, that you've gone overtime and we'll ask you to wrap it up. And with that, we'll then go through the public comment section. We'll close that portion once we've heard from everyone who wishes to speak. And at that point, we will then go to questions from the board. Questions from the board is essentially when members of the zoning board will ask in, I'll be calling upon them in sequence, and they will be articulating questions that they may have themselves, questions that they may have adapted from the public comment section, and also members of the, of our community who are in attendance. When you present during public comment, you may present in the form of a question, but just understand that it's, it's no discourteous, discourtesy to you that we don't answer your question directly. We are listening, however, and taking notes. And often you'll hear your question adapted in some form by a member of the board during the questions from the board period. But feel free to frame your question, your comments as a question. Just understand that we mean no, no discourtesy if we're, if we're not being responsive directly. But we will hear everything and go through everything. The questions from the board will go through each, every member, each and every member's questions of the applicant or the representative on behalf of the applicant, at which point I'll close that portion of the public hearing. And then we go into deliberations. Deliberations is the critical part of the meeting when you essentially observe us thinking out loud. And we will deliberate and toil and tussle over our feelings of what we heard, whether the legal criteria may have been met. We may often, as is sometimes the case, we may have additional questions, at which point we will pose those questions to try to have a better, you know, body of deliberations. But the deliberations period is when the zoning board members themselves will discuss amongst themselves their thoughts and they'll run it through the lens of the legal criteria that we must hold every application accountable in order for that application to be successful. So in, in the closure of the deliberations, I will then close that portion and we will go to a vote. And in that modified rules, that modified form of Robert's Rules of Order, I will ask member of the ZBA to offer a motion. And that motion will always be prevented, presented in the affirmative. It'll be presented as a motion to approve. But keep in mind, that doesn't necessarily mean that that member will plan to approve or supports the application. It's just merely the mechanism by which the question is advanced to the floor for a full vote. So a motion is made in the form of a motion to approve. That motion is seconded by another member, at which point I call the roll. And we will go through the roll and each member will vote yea or nay, yes or no. And in order to be successful, an application must be met with at least four yes votes in order to, in order for the motion to carry and the application to be approved. And that's, that's essentially the lay of the land. I know it's a bit long-winded, but I think it's important for everyone to understand how the flow works before we jump into the business of this evening. So without, without further ado, we will now go into the first matter that we have, which is in our meeting, our public, I'm sorry, our business meeting. It's a request for a minor modification. It's the application of 257 Low Street. And this is a, an application where the applicant, children's healthcare seeks a slight modification of their permit. And with that, I will turn it over to, to the applicant or the applicant's representative and to let us know what, what it is you wish to modify.
Yeah. So my name is Tor Larson. I'm from Science East LLC. As you can see on page four, we're basically taking the existing sign off, and we're going to move it over to the other side of the driveway. What that's going to do is allow the traffic and the people coming to the children's healthcare, a much easier access and much safer entrance way. As if you're coming from 95, you almost have to come to a complete stop or look over your right shoulder to see the sign, which is not very safe. So we're looking to get a double sided sign, which is allotted in the space that's there. And it will be running perpendicular to the road and allow ease of access and viewability for all of the people coming to and from, as well as the kids in the car. The same amount of materials and process will be used at the sign now. The only difference is we're going to use granite posts to kind of spruce it up a little bit, and it's not going to be as tall. The granite posts are only going to be about six foot seven inches or smaller. And those will be into the ground concrete. It'll be nice and strong for all our New England weather. So if you guys have any questions on the sign, it's kind of straightforward as to my eyes, but I'm sure you all might have a question or two. Feel free to ask.
Very good. Thank you very much for that presentation. So we will, since this is a request for a minor modification, we will go through the members of the board for, for any questions, comments, and then we can advance the matter on to a vote. So, all right. So we've had the presentation. It appears it's a sign modification. We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. I just had a question on, and it was mentioned in the notes, and it'd been that you've been in discussion with the city engineer about removal of a pine tree. And I just wanted, for the record, could you address what, what is involved with removal of that pine tree? Just detail around it and where it is.
Well, when I have the mini excavator there to dig, to place the, sorry, the granite posts themselves, I'll use that to remove and safely pull the dirt away. The person that runs my mini excavator, it runs a very big end landscape company. So I think out of his mind, he's probably going to take him, use it somewhere else. But we're just going to remove that safely, to put it somewhere on another property, and we'll fill it in with the dirt and mold that's there. So there won't be a hole there. But it'll allow the visibility from the other side of the telephone pole. It won't be blocking the new area of the sign. If that answers your question.
That did. Great. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swanton, any questions?
No, I do not have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Shannon.
Yes, just had one question. Can you, can the applicant discuss the difference in sizes of the sign? I know one's rectangular and one's kind of square. About the square footage of the two signs, are they identical? Is one bigger than the other?
We're actually, we're actually under, there is, I think it was, I haven't written down here, so. I believe if my numbers are right, it was 69 square feet were allotted, and we're down closer to 50 square foot range.
In the, yeah, so. Previous sign you taken down is, is bigger than?
Yes. Okay. Because we're getting rid of that whole area. Yeah, it's allotted 69 square feet. So we're.
Spent.
Hundred pieces of paper. Proposed sign is 60 square feet.
Or is it? Thank you. No other questions, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Bennett.
I just was curious. I, the existing sign has kind of these architectural elements, if you will, the, the shape to the top to kind of mimic the structure itself. And it looks like there's a, I don't know, a logo, and all of which, I mean, to my eye, I kind of like it better than the box sign that you have. I don't have any real problem with that. But I'm just curious, why did you, was there any thought as to why you were changing the, you know, kind of the lettering, the messaging on that, the way it's articulated on the board, on the sign itself?
We went with more box lettering due to their kind of branding guidelines, also due to the fact that as you're coming down that road at 30 miles an hour, the children's healthcare is much taller font. Not, it's not bigger than eight inches tall, but it's big enough that you can easily see it while driving in traffic. If you notice, when you look at the sign that was there before, and this is typical of a lot of sign makers, is they'll make a lot of extra stuff around the sign for architectural, but then you can't even read, you know, if you, if you look at the picture, you can actually read children's healthcare in the proposed sign where you can't, it only looks like a circular logo existing. So that's what I try and get out of my signs is the most prominent visualization of all of them, as opposed to just, you know, but the granite post, I think, added a nice little touch that'll kind of keep in the whole Newbury Port theme.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that. I was just curious. I mean, your point is well made that the sign should be able to be read. Kind of a guiding principle of signs, I suspect. But thanks for your insights.
Okay, I only had one additional question. And you may have, I'm not sure if you touched on it, but how will it be lit?
Um, we don't have any lighting on as of now.
Is it just the ambient lighting from Low Street that you rely?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not many people are going to come in at nighttime, you know.
Right. Okay. Very good. Any other questions, members of the ZBA, before we close this out? I'm going to close out the questions from ZBA. We'll go into deliberations on the minor, request for minor modification. Our, our responsibility is to determine whether or not, in fact, it is a minor request and minor modification, and then whether it meets with the board's sense of approval. So any, any thoughts? We'll start with Mr. Moore.
I certainly see this as a minor modification, just changing the orientation of the sign makes sense. And, and removing that tree is probably a great idea, even if the sign wasn't going there just for visibility's sake. So I have, I have no problem with this being a minor modifications I could approve.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yes, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Moore, and I can support this sign change.
Very good. Mr. Shannon.
I agree with previous two colleagues and I can support it.
And thank you, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, I agree as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I concur as well. So we'll close deliberations. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to deem the request for minor, this a minor modification and approve the request as such for 257 Low Street MM dash 21 dash four, with the condition that no part of the sign or footing should be closer than six feet from the face of the adjacent roadway or the driveway curbing.
I'll second it. Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it, the motion carries. And the minor modification is approved with Mr. Moore's conditions. Thank you very much for the presentation and good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, moving now into our, our public hearings. We'll begin, as promised, I'm going to begin with taking a few of these out of order that we've received, for which we've received requests to continue or withdraw. And we'll begin on the first, actually, the first matter in the app, in the agenda is 193 High Street, Heavylake Real Estate LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta. This was continued from March 23rd, 2021, and is being requested to be continued until May 12th, 2022. We've received a request from Attorney Mead's office. I know Attorney Mead's present. Attorney Mead, do you wish to be heard or just will, do you wish us to just move on your request for the continuance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to have you move on the request. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I think that the letter is self-explanatory.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. So members of the ZBA, we, we have the request to continue this matter to May 12th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
And this is Mr. Shag, and I'll make a motion that don't get number 193 High Street be postponed until the May 2022 meeting.
Okay.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Thank you. So Mr. Shannon's motion, Mr. Swanton's second on the motion to continue to 512, 2022, calling the roll. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it, the motion carries. The matter is continued as requested to May 12th, 2022. The next matter in our list for which we've received a request by the applicant for a continuance is the matter by Michael Buckham and Anna Wallach, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta for the property at Four Plum Street, continued from November 9th, 2021. The applicant is seeking to continue until January 25th of 2022. I assume Attorney Mead, you, you don't wish to be heard on this and wish us to just proceed on the request.
I would just, I'll just say for the next two items, this one and the next one, the historic commission didn't have a quorum at their last meeting. And so there had to be a rescheduling of all of these things. And so that's the, the reason behind this and the next one.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Mead. Members of the ZBA, do we have a motion on the applicant's request on Four Plum to continue to January 25th, 22?
So moved. I move for 2021 dash 59, be continued to 125, 22.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon. Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it, the motion carries. And the application for Four Plum Streets been continued to January 25th, 2022. And the last matter, I believe, nope, there's one out there after this. This is another matter represented by Attorney Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta, on behalf of Charon Drive LLC, Five Charon Drive. Matter is being continued by request to the.
No.
No.
We're moving forward. My apologies.
Right.
There is a.
75th Street, sir. 1075th Street.
75th Street. Thank you. So 1075th Street, this is by request by Attorney Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta to continue this matter until 1228, 2021. And it's 1075th Street, Ray Kingman, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta. Do we have a motion to continue?
So moved, Mr. Moore.
Second, Mr. Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swanton, calling the roll. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it, the motion carries. And that matter has been continued to 1228. And finally, we have a request to withdraw. There is no applicant present on behalf of ID Sign Group, Inc., on the matter of 45 story avenue. Members of the ZBA, since we have no applicant present, we can simply vote to allow the withdrawal without prejudice. And with that, do we have a motion?
So moved.
So seconded, Ken Swanton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore and Mr. Swanton, calling the roll on the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice on 45 story avenue. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. 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 Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. Five in the affirmative. The ayes have it, the motion carries. And the matter of 45 story avenue has been withdrawn by request without, without prejudice. So that leaves us with the first matter that we will move forward on, on our docket. And that is the application on 2224 Olive Street LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta LLC. This is a continuation of our hearing from November 23rd, 2021. The application, the applicant seeks all necessary permits to remove an addition on the rear of the structure and construct a new addition. And with that, may we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta, 30 Green Street, Newbury Port, for the record. With me this evening is Ernie DiMaio of Tectonics Architects. He's the architect on the project. And my client, 2224 Olive Street LLC, represented by John Sarkis, who is the manager. Following our last meeting, if you can go to the next slide, please. Following our last meeting, we took some time to put together some additional comparative material that we hope better illustrates to the board how this project is not, the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure on the property. And I respectfully remind the board that substantially means to a great or significant extent. And we believe, we believe that the material that we will be showing you will demonstrate that. Specifically, as I noted in my cover, and I'm just going to do a brief overview here, we've included a plan that was created off of the city's MIMAP system, which shows post footprint, which proposed, the proposed footprint of the structure on the property, along with photographs of adjacent nearby buildings, to better illustrate to the board that indeed the structure and its proposed addition is actually less dense and provides. Provides.
If I can interrupt Attorney Mead, I'm sorry. Here's Mr. Sarkis' mic is, is hot, and we're getting some feedback. If, Mr. Sarkis, if you can hear us, could you mute your mic kindly? It'll help us be able to listen carefully to. There you go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So we believe that the materials we're about to show you and that Ernie is about to review with you, illustrate that the structure and the proposed addition actually is less dense and provides more separation between adjacent structures than most, if not all, of the rest of the neighborhood. You'll see that the proposed renovations are consistent with, and certainly not substantially more detrimental than the existing conditions on the property. When you review the resulting separation between the structures on other properties, the area of coverage as compared to the neighborhood, the height of the surrounding structures, the open space around the proposed structure versus that, which is around other structures in the neighborhood, and the scale of the building as well as the lots overall. So if you go to the next slide, please. So I'll remind the board, here are the existing conditions. You have the south elevation on Russia Street, and you can see the existing addition on the back off of Russia Street. You have the existing east elevation, which is Olive Street, which is the top right corner. And the bottom left corner is the north elevation, coming up Olive Street, if you will. You can see the addition, the other part of the addition in the back. And then the existing west elevation. And as a reminder to the board, that both of these additions in the back are coming off, and a more significant portion of the rear part of the structure will be coming exposed, in addition to some of the original windows being reopened. If you go to the next slide. And here are photographs of those same elevations. So if you look at the top left, you can see the Russia Street elevation. And the top right is the elevation on Olive Street, looking at the north side of the building. The bottom left is the, going the opposite way on Russia Street towards Olive Street. So you can see the outdoor building, the outside building or the outbuilding, if you will, that's going to be coming down. So you're going to be able to see a portion of the back of the structure in addition to the proposed addition, of course. And then the bottom right structure or photograph is coming up Olive Street. I'll note just briefly, in the two right-hand photos, and Ernie's going to talk on this a little bit more, earlier, we, their folks talked about the size and massing of the historic structure. I'll remind the board that this historic structure is actually not being changed at all. And the addition in the back is going to be smaller than this structure. The historic structure, as you can see, is shorter in height than the existing building to the right, that red brick building. And I'll let Ernie go into that. And you can see that in actually three of these photographs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ernie and he's. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ernie, and he's going to talk a little bit. I think Mr. Shagnon at the last meeting had some questions about the interior and why or how the current two units work on the interior of the building. And I'm going to let Ernie go through the development process here related to the interior of the building and the need to put the addition on for the second unit. Ernie?
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. The next slide, please. So what we've done here is just to give everyone a little bit of an understanding of how we got here. This is a slide showing the floor plan on the first floor of the existing structure and some of the elements of the building that became extremely important for us to preserve and retain. The layout of the existing building has a central corridor that runs from Olive Street towards the west elevation. The walls are not structural per se, but they are bracing walls for the timber frame. And then we have the subsidiary stairs on either side that go up and down to the basement and to the second floor, in the case of the stair on the left. The structure is divided into four quadrants, if you will, four rooms. Each room has a fireplace. Each fireplace is flanked by very large windows. You can see that very clearly in the photos on the left. The upper photo shows what you might consider to be a typical window opening with its splayed sides and its large window opening. And then below that image too, shows the fireplaces in the rooms that front on Olive Street. Centered in the room with large windows right up against them on either side. And then the photo below shows the entry door as you arrive at the building on Olive Street at that central stair hall. The photo on the upper left shows some of the timberwork in the building that's exposed in various portions of the structure. Timberwork that we're going to largely retain in certain areas, in some areas might not be. But there will be a significant amount of those areas that will remain open as a desirable feature for a potential occupant, a resident. The middle photos show the main stair as it runs from Olive Street towards the west side. The stair will be retained and it's entirely and restored. The view on the left side shows the stair from the first floor. And then the view on the right side shows the stair as it is in the stair hall on the second floor. And then below, the image below shows the mirroring fireplace to the one spoken of prior shows the large flanking windows, which are typical to the building and the fireplace. From Olive Street towards the west facade, we have less than 36 feet on each side of the building. Each of that 36 feet is interrupted by a stair foyer or a stair heading down. And so the net available space within any of the quadrants is approximately 16 to 18 feet. The reason why the building, the existing building has two, what we consider to be substandard additions on the back is because the existing two-family required those additions in order to make this building a successful two-family. There quite simply isn't enough footprint on the site to be able to have the existing building be the two-family unit without creating studio apartments or one-bedroom apartments, which we've deemed to be not viable economically. So in the same way that we are putting an addition on the building as our proposed solution, the existing project relies on the addition for its success as a two-family unit. From the very beginning of the project, understanding the building and the pieces that we wanted to retain and thought were important, that included both the interior and the exterior, not merely the exterior. I know that's the main topic of the ZBA and perhaps the Historic Commission, but it was very important for us to have a manifesto of how we were going to proceed. First, we wanted to preserve as many of the exterior doors and windows as we could. We wanted to modify the facade as little as possible. We wanted to keep, to restore windows and facade where it was possible, as Lisa mentioned, the existing facade. The existing addition to cover up several windows and a significant portion of the facade. And in removing them and replacing that with a narrower hyphen for the new addition, we're able to restore portions of the original facade, which is a plus for those who care about historic buildings. We wanted to save as many architecturally significant elements as possible, including stairs, fireplaces, rainscoting, timber frame, wideboard floors, plaster, the trim, all of that. So in looking at all the different options that were available to us for the project, the best opportunity for maximum preservation of the existing original historic building was in fact to use an addition to defer new work as much as possible to the exterior. Next slide, please.
Ernie, if you could just lean up to your mic, that would be helpful.
The proposed addition, as Lisa mentioned, creates no non-conformities or nor extends any existing non-conformities. We comply with the zoning ordinance in terms of setback, side yard, building height, lot coverage, open space, et cetera. The, we are proposing to have five parking spaces on the site. There's an existing, what might be called a tandem space on Olive Street. We're proposing to have two spaces added in front of our hyphen and two spaces added along Russia Street towards the far western portion of the project. Lastly, I did want to say that, given all the single-story outbuildings that exist on the site, which contribute to lot coverage, the demolition of the two substandard additions and the workshop and other outbuildings actually creates a decrease in the proposed lot coverage on the site from 24.7% to 24.5%. Once the addition is built, we'll actually have less built area on the site than there is currently. Next slide, please. So what you're seeing here is our south elevation or the Russia Street elevation. It involves a hyphen connecting the existing historic building to the main body of the addition, which is rendered in red brick. The hyphen has been reduced in height so that the new ridgeline of our addition tucks below the eve of the existing historic roof. We do not overlay the historic roof. This was something that the Historic Commission specifically praised in our proposal. We set back the facades of the hyphen approximately seven foot three inches from the Russia Street facade. And the brick portion of the addition is set back five feet from the Russia Street facade, which is already approaching 27 feet at its narrowest point from the street line on Russia Street. The elevation below shows the Olive Street elevation, which with the exception of new shutters and paint and any restoring that we need to do, any building elements remains largely unchanged. Two fireplaces that are located adjacent to the hyphen addition will be reconstructed to match the other fireplaces because they're in poor condition and need to be structurally rebuilt. Next slide, please. So this diagram was an important piece of information for the Historic Commission because it detailed point by point how we conformed with and even exceeded the guidelines that were published by the Secretary of the Interior. Obviously, our addition is smaller than the existing building. We're differentiated from the existing building. We make no attempt to unify this as a single structure, which is the stated goal of the Secretary of the Interior. Our doors and windows are related in size and alignment to the existing building, which was a desirable feature in the Secretary of Interior guidelines. We're physically separated. The bulk of our mass of our addition is physically separated from the historic building with the hyphen. There's a diagram directly below, which is taken directly from the Secretary of Interior guidelines, showing how a hyphen is a desired way to resolve adding a new mass to the building. We refrain from putting any front doors on the brick portion of the addition so as not to have it appear as though it were a standalone structure. And in fact, the hyphen contains elements of both units within the first floor of it. It's entered through a single door into a common space. And then the residents will move to the left or to the right, depending on which unit they're entering. Lastly, the addition is designed in such a way that it can be removed in the future without harming the original building, which is another Secretary of the Interior requirement. Next slide, please. This slide shows the location of the addition on the property. If we could perhaps zoom in a little bit, so we can see a little bit more clearly how the site is positioned, how the building is positioned on the site. The massing for the proposed addition is confined to the very center portion of the site. As I mentioned, the hyphen is set back from both the Russia Street facade and from the north elevation. The placement of the addition in the center of the site is done so so that we can maximize the amount of setback and open space and landscaped area between our addition and any of others, or the addition and the streetscape. If you recall from Lisa's slide, there is a stockade fence that is right up against the sidewalk along Russia Street. And there's a one-story workshop building that's right up against the street. Those structures will be removed and the building will allow its open space between the addition and the sidewalk to be enjoyed by everyone walking along Russia Street. From the point of view of scale and massing, that we understand that the eve line of our addition, there's a diagram on this page that shows building height. The eve line of our addition is approximately 21 feet above, I'm sorry, the eve line of the historic building is 21 feet above grade. But the eve line of our addition is approximately 18 feet above grade. This information will be important as we move forward.
Ernie, if you could, if you could just hang on one second. I do want to point out to the board, there was a question that came in from a resident relative to the parking spaces on this plan. And I would just point out that both of these parking spaces, parking areas off of Russia Street are actually 18 by 18, which sits two cars in a nine by 18 space as required by the city ordinance. I just wanted to point out those measurements. Sorry about that, Ernie.
No problem, Lisa. Thank you. We, in order to understand whether or not the project that we're proposing fits in well with the existing neighborhood context, I think it's important to do a little bit of an overview of to where we're fitting in, so we can move on to the next slide, please. The next slide is a map of Olive Street, the Olive Street vicinity. Our parcel is located near the very center of this map. Perhaps we might zoom in just a little bit, so we can see that a little bit more closely. We're showing the proposed addition on this diagram. So you can see it, the buildings, the building masses are shown in the pinkish color and the beigeish color represents what is open space. And I think it's apparent from a review of this context that there's nothing in particular about the structure that we're proposing that leaps out at anyone doing an analysis as being grossly out of place with its surroundings. In fact, there are several pink masses on this drawing that are significantly larger than the structure that we're proposing on Russia Street. The lot that we have is, has more open space than virtually any other lot along Olive Street. We have nearly 7,225 square feet of open space after our addition is built. That represents a space larger than 25 of the 33 lot on lower, in the lower Olive Street neighborhood. The most important open space, we believe, is the open space at the corner of the property at Olive and Russia Street. As I mentioned, our addition is set back further from Russia Street than the existing building. So we're maintaining a large front setback. In fact, we're actually creating it with the removal of the stockade fence and the workshop. A brief look across the street, you can see what is the largest building on Olive Street, which I'll be talking about next. That's 25 to 35 Olive Street, which is directly opposite our structure. Let's move on to the next slide. This is a photograph taken along Russia Street, looking towards Olive Street. You can see the corner of our historic building on the far left side. The dimension from the corner of our building to the curb line is approximately 35 feet. The 25 to 35 Olive Street, which are six condominium units, that building is approximately eight feet from the sidewalk. 25 to 35 Olive Street is by far the largest building along this lower section of Olive Street. We can move on to the next slide. We'll talk about this a little bit more. 25 to 35 Olive Street is approximately 125 feet long along Olive Street. There was some discussion about the length of our facade along Russia Street. Our proposed facade along Russia Street, which consists of numerous setbacks and changes of material, is 84 feet. So 25 to 35 Olive Street is approximately 33% longer than our structure. 25 to 35 Olive has 38 windows along Olive Street compared to our 17. They have six doors and 60 shutters, to give you an example of the scale of that element. 25 to 35 Olive covers approximately 41% of its lot. And I would also add that the remaining open space at 25 to 35 Olive is largely paved. Whereas our lot, 22 to 24 Olive, has approximately 24% of its lot covered or 76% open space, most of which is landscaped area. 25 to 35 Olive has six minutes compared to our two. They have 50% more floor area, approximately 7,500 square feet to our proposed 5,000. And they are separated from their neighbors to the north and south by 12 and 13 feet respectively. Whereas our addition is 38 feet from 20 Olive, 38 feet from six Russia, 69 feet to 26 Olive, and 38 feet to the west. We're also approximately 69 feet from that large billing, building, 25 to 35 Olive. So this image that I'm showing is relatively to scale. We've tried to blow up the photo to match the scale of our drawing. This drawing up above shows our Russia Street facade. It shows the hyphen connector lower than the existing eve of the historic building. It shows the proposed brick area lower than the existing building. We're approximately seven foot eight inches lower at the hyphen roof from the ridge of the existing building. And we're four and a half feet lower on the brick portion of the building to the ridge of its roof. So we're substantially smaller than the existing building. 25 to 35 Olive, as I said, if you look at the massing of that building, you can remove a full third of that building and still be about the same size as what we're proposing on Russia Street. You can see also the fact we have much more surface area of materials, brick materials. Whereas the facade of 25 to 35 has 38 windows and 60 shutters to go along with its six doors. Next slide, please. This is a view down Olive Street, taken at the very center of the street. You can see in the foreground on the left, 26 Olive Street. Our structure, 22 to 24 Olive, is the bluish structure on the left side. On the right side, you can see 25 to 35 On the right side, you can see 25 to 35 Olive Street. And then in the foreground, you can see the building that is 37 Olive Street in the foreground. 37 Olive Street is the building that's 12 feet away from 25 to 35 Olive. A quick glance at the building, we did some field measurements from the public sidewalk as best we could. But the eve line of our historic building, which is taller than our addition, lands about mid-window on the facade of 25 to 35 Olive. That means the eve line of 25 to 35 Olive is approximately the same height as our ridge of our historic building, which is four and a half feet higher than the roof of our hyphen addition. Any way you look at it, this photo shows how 25 to 38 Olive dominates this portion of Olive Street and is substantially larger than what our existing building is and our proposed addition does to it. This is not necessarily to a commentary on 25 to 35, except to say that our proposed structure is no more detrimental to the Olive Street neighborhood than existing buildings already in place. Next slide, please. This slide, if we could zoom in a little bit, please, shows the building numbers for the immediate area surrounding our project, which is at center on the screen right now. And in red, you can see the building numbers. And in black, you can see the dimensions between the building. I won't go through each individual dimension for you, except to say that from our addition to our neighbor to the north, 20 Olive Street, we're 38 feet away. We're 38 feet to six Russia, we're 70 feet to three to five Russia. And we're 68 or 69 feet to 26 Russia, Olive Street, I'm sorry. There are no other buildings in this immediate neighborhood that have anywhere close to these dimensions surrounding their structures. Whether the buildings are single family or multifamily, whether they're longer or shorter, virtually every other structure that you see in this photograph is closer to its neighbor than our proposed addition is to any of its neighbors. Next slide, please. This is a shot taken from 2535, looking back towards our facade, 22 to 24 Olive Street. And then to the right of it, you can see 20 Olive Street. And then to the right of that, you see 16 Olive Street in white. The point of this elevation is to show several things. First of all, the eve line of the historic, historic structure, which is taller than our addition hyphen roof, is actually at about the same elevation on 20 Olive Street and 16 Olive Street. They're within a foot or two of each other in terms of height. The biggest difference between our historic building and those neighboring buildings is that our roof has a shallow hip, which takes the ultimate height of the roof, the ridge, back 20 feet from the facade on Olive Street. Whereas 20 Olive Street and 16 Olive Street, which are typical of many of the buildings along Olive Street, have its ultimate height along the streetscape. So the ridge of 20 Olive Street, which is approximately eight feet taller than our eve line, comes right up to the sidewalk on Olive Street. The eve line to the ridge on 16 Olive Street is comparable, perhaps a foot or two less than 20 to 18 Olive Street. My point is that from a relative mass point of view, there is without question a greater sense of height to the other structures, regardless of their length, along Olive Street. Next slide, please. This slide is taken from opposite 20 Olive Street. And it shows the relative distances between 22 to 24 Olive, our historic building, and 20 Olive Street. We have 25 feet of distance between our building and the red brick building to the right of us in this photo. Whereas 20 Olive Street, which has a significant addition on the backside of it, is 15 feet from its neighbor, 16 Olive Street. It's 10 feet closer to its neighbor than our historic building is to 20 Olive. Please also remember that we're setting our addition back on the side that's closest to 20 Olive Street. So we'll be an additional 13 feet further back from 20 Olive Street than the facade in this photo appears. Again, I believe that 20 Olive Street and 16 Olive Street are lovely buildings, buildings in keeping with the structures in the neighborhood, athletic and varied materials and colors, but fitting in perfectly well the way our historic addition does. My point is that we fit in just as well within the neighborhood addition or no addition than any of the existing structures with more space between us and our neighbors. Next slide, please. This photograph is from the corner of Olive and Russia Street. Our building is in the foreground to the right side. And this shows a view looking across our setback towards Russia Street. You can see 26 Olive is in the foreground to the left side. You can see two Congress Street, which is the Blue Peak Building in the background. Number four, Conover Street, in the far background in white. And then three to five Russia Street, which is the yellow building to the right side. In each of these four cases, every single one of those buildings is taller to the street than either our existing building or the proposed addition, which is smaller than the historic building. In fact, three to five Russia Street is an entire story taller than our proposed addition. And four Congress is not only a story taller, but it has a roof deck. Again, keep in mind that from this vantage point, our addition is set back an additional seven foot three inches. Next slide, please. This, this elevation shows both the north elevation, which is facing 20 Olive, and it shows the west elevation, which will largely be visible now that we've removed our stockade fence and our one-story building. You can see comparatively that the brick addition that we're proposing in the foreground of our existing historic building is much lower to the ground, has lower eve heights, lower ridge heights. We're not even showing the hyphen in this drawing because it's largely hidden by the rest of what we're proposing. You can see how far setback we end for, we are from the left and right sides of the historic addition. And that setback allows us to restore 257 square feet of original facade and a net of two original windows can now be restored back on that west elevation. Next slide, please. Go back to where we were. This is our proposed addition as viewed from Olive Street. Our addition is on the right side, set very far back. There is a window where a view will be possible. But again, as I've said, this is a very limited window from Olive Street, given the foliage and so forth. One has to be specifically looking for it to actually see it. It's set back and set lower, not very much of a factor in how our property is viewed from Olive Street, from this vantage point. Next slide, please. This is a view from the corner of Olive and Russia Street. Our proposed addition to the far left side shows where the hyphen is located. It's actually set far enough back in this view that you didn't even see the wall of the hyphen from this vantage point. It's set back so far. But you can see the brick portion of the building, the rhythm of the windows, shutters that pick up on the original building, the motif of the brickwork and the chimney, which pay homage to the original structure, the setback of the addition, the landscaping in the foreground. We're being deferential to the existing building, but complimentary. Next slide, please. And I think this view, the aerial view, shows, shows best how the addition being set back as far as it is from our neighbors and creating as much setback as our neighbors attempts to minimize the mass on the property. Important to understand in the summation of it is that in no way is the historic structure being demolished or substantially altered, either on the interior or the exterior. It is being largely preserved and restored. The historic structure will remain plainly visible and at the forefront of the lot, both in terms of its Russia Street facade and its Olive Street facade. The proposal allows for the historic elements of the interior of the building to be largely retained and restored, which is, as I mentioned earlier, a very important decision, part of the decision-making process in the design. We're creating quality off-street parking, which will help to minimize the impact of cars on Olive Street, even though we have an existing two-family structure. We're providing an off-street parking for them so that spaces along Olive Street can remain largely unused by the occupants of this building. And again, the proposed structure complies with all prescribed dimensional controls. And with that, I'll open this up to Lisa again.
Thank you very much, Ernie. And if I could just kind of wrap it up here. So as Ernie has provided, the buildings immediately adjacent to the neighborhood, in the neighborhood, are taller, longer, more dense, provide less separation and less open space than what we're proposing on this property. The building is not out of character by way of size, density, or impact on this lot or even on the adjacent structures. I know this board has heard from a number of people in the city or neighborhood. And you've also heard from neighbors who are in support of this. The owners of the most adjacent property on Russia Street, the owners of the side opposite that, five Russia Street, they own both of those properties, have provided letters of support, as has an owner later down Russia Street, Mr. McCarthy. The good news is this board is guided by the standards in the ordinance. And the standards in the ordinance say that the new addition, that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, substantially, of course, being to a greater or significant extent than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. The board can consider, among other relevant factors, the size, scale, massing, and volume and location of the proposed structure, which Ernie has all provided extensive details and comparisons to. The existing, then, of, as it compares to the existing structure and lot, as well as other structures and lots in the neighborhood. And I think that based upon those very specific criteria in the ordinance, as you compare the facts that are before you of not only this property, but the existing structure and buildings on the site as compared to the rest of the neighborhood, the board certainly can find, I believe, that this project is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sarkis, Mr. DeConis, and Attorney Mead for your presentation. We will close that portion of the public hearing and move to public comment. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Port to put up the public comment slide. And ladies and gentlemen, if, if you're in attendance, just take a moment and, and attune yourself to the, the public comment instructions. Well, again, just ask that you kindly give your name and address for the record. And please try to keep your comments to within two minutes. With that, I will, will begin, and I will recognize Attorney Bill Sheehan III. And Attorney Sheen, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, honorable members. My name is Bill Sheehan. I practice law at 8 Essex Center Drive in Peabody, Massachusetts. And I represent Carol Zamprona. She is the Director Butter at 20 Olive Street. I am cognizant of your request that each person speak for only two minutes. I'll probably go over that a little bit, but I will try to move quickly. Keep in mind, please, that what we're really talking about here is a lot with now two houses proposed on a single lot. It is joined by a hyphen to avoid the ordinance's recent prohibition of two houses on a lot. My client now sees a structure that's 24 feet high by 38 feet long. My client will see, if this proposal is allowed, a structure 24 feet high and 84 feet long. My client's home is about a dozen paces from the so-called addition. The two units at 2224 Olive Street, and keep in mind, we have a two-family there now. The two-family house is on a lot which is much too small, according to your zoning ordinance. Those units can be extended modestly in a westerly direction. The applicant chooses not to do so, but rather chooses to provide a huge massing, as you have just seen with respect to the photographs and the architect's renditions. Has there been a lot coverage reduction? Well, technically, yes, but in feel, certainly not. A huge increase in the massing, creating an attached two-story structure in lieu of a couple of low-slung outbuildings and a one-story addition. The issue is not whether 25-35 Olive Street is detrimental to the neighborhood. And frankly, the comparison of what is being proposed by the applicant to that building built in 1850, I would suggest is specious. You should be comparing it to the houses in the neighborhood, not the unique six-unit condominium in a building that's over 170 years old. And as to comparing it to the houses in the neighborhood, please see the chart that accompanied my letter of November 23, 2021. That was not in, in front of the board when last we met. You will see that the houses that are in the neighborhood, the proposed structure is almost two times as large as the largest house in the neighborhood and over three times the size of many of the houses in the neighborhood. If you look at the two lots that are on Olive Street that are close in size to the applicant's lot, you'll see that at 16 Olive Street and at 26 Olive Street, there's a lot size of some 7,500 square feet. And if you look at the finished area of the house on those two lots, you'll see about 2,500 to 2,300 square feet. In other words, there's a ratio there of maybe 30 to 35%. Interestingly, if you look at the house as it presently exists at 2224 Olive Street and you compare it to its lot size, it falls exactly within that ratio, 30 to 35%. But that's not what the applicant wants to do. The applicant wants to significantly increase the finish area to where it's almost 50% ratio. So there is absolutely no way that the house as proposed fits the houses in this neighborhood. And that, with all due respect, is what you are looking at here. And that's the standard, because the standard is, is it substantially more detrimental? And the answer to that question is yes. The lot and the structure are non-conforming now. The lot is too small by nearly a third. The house is too close to Olive Street, 10 feet instead of 25 feet. And it's too close to my client's property, 16 feet versus the 25 feet. Please consider this. In the R2 district, your ordinance requires a maximum of 25% lot coverage and a minimum 15,000 square foot lot to use that property as a two-family. That is, your ordinance says that there should be at least 11,250 square feet of lot area, not devoted to building area. That's what your ordinance requires. The applicant's lot doesn't even have 11,250 square feet in total. This is way too big for the lot in question, way too big for the neighborhood. Is the proposed house too big? Is it substantially more detrimental? Of course it is. It will choke off light. It will choke off air. It overcrowds an existing non-conforming lot. It overcrowds the neighborhood. The board knows that you are the guardians of the neighborhood, the guardians of the city. We know that you've given this great consideration and you will give great consideration to the almost universal opposition of the neighborhood. You should deny the special permit as requested. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Sheen. Thank you, Attorney Sheehan. Recognizing next Carol Zambroni. Ms. Zambroni, if you could unmute your mic, the bottom of your screen, and you have the floor. Think we might have a, let's see, Ms. Zambroni, can you hear us? Can you hear me? We can't hear you, and I can't tell. Andy, can you tell if Ms. Zambroni's mic is muted?
She's unmuted on our side, Chair.
She's unmuted. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we will press pause, so to speak, and we'll circle back to Ms. Zamproni. We'll go down the list. I'll recognize Elizabeth Howlett. Elizabeth Howlett, if you would not mind unmuting your mic, and you have the floor. If you could just give your name and address for our keeper of the of the record, please.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. We hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Howlett. I've lived at 23 Olive Street for over 13 years. I am almost directly across the street from our property in question. And I'd like to just make a few comments, which, some of which I've written in my letter to the board dated December 12. Not only is this grand brick two-family home, already two-family home, historic, but the lot on which it stands of 11,000 square feet is historic as well. There are not many examples of properties like this left in Newburyport today, thanks to the infill that has been allowed in so many parts of our city. Is Newburyport hell-bent on destroying every green space in every neighborhood? Yards and lawns give air and light, peace and beauty, and some manner of wildlife habitat to neighborhoods that cannot be measured in dollars? And why deprive future generations of Newburyporters the chance to see what the old neighborhoods used to be like? Must they all be changed forever by this infill? The so-called 1,800-square-foot, quote, addition to this already two-family home will destroy this property's and our neighborhood's sense of peace by not only creating more traffic and parking woes, but just by its infilling this open space. You know, it's bad enough in good weather, but try getting through Russia Street or Olive Street when we measure snow in feet, not inches. It's plowed to the sides of the roads, and Russia Street is narrow. Two cars cannot pass at the same time in good weather, allowing two new curb cuts with parking for four vehicles backing out onto Russia Street makes no sense whatsoever. As to the size of the proposed addition, its square footage alone is greater than seven of the homes in our immediate Olive and Russia Street neighborhoods. It seems that Attorney Mead and Ernie are stating that the size of this proposed addition is in keeping with the size and scale of other nearby properties. And I submit that there have been many untruths spoken here tonight about this. My home is a little over 1,600 square feet, almost 1,700, and I'm directly across the street. I'm at a much lower roof line than any houses in the immediate area. And this so-called addition is, has more square footage than our entire home. So to make a 3,567-square-foot two-family home into one condo, and then to add another 1,800 square-foot, quote, addition to it as a second condo, is to me very unnecessary. It deprives the neighborhood of air movement, open space, light. It deprives the city and future generations a glimpse of what a historic neighborhood actually looked like by infilling every green space with a building and adding to the traffic and safety woes of yet another neighborhood. It all makes no sense. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Howlett. Recognizing next Ms. Amy Badger. Ms. Badger, if you could unmute your mic and just give your name and address for the record, and you have the floor.
Mute. Okay. Sorry. Technical difficulties. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Amy Badger, and I live at 21 Olive Street and have for 30 years. I oppose this project for the simple truth that I believe it to be an egregious attempt at making the most profit possible at the expense of this elegant old house, a densely settled neighborhood, and a community that I believe has finally had enough. This home and its current size and scope can naturally be divided into two more modest units. This town is not lacking for 1.5 or $2 million properties, but we could very much use some more affordable housing. And I realize that developers are not lining up to do affordable housing when they can sell a $1 or a $2 million home. So even if these weren't deemed affordable housing, at the very least, they would be on the more modest scale, which is much more in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, and something that perhaps a couple or small family could enjoy. People actually do live comfortably in under 2,000 square feet, and it's happening all over town, including directly across the street in the six condos that were built hundreds of years ago, right there. With all the eclectic housing types in Newburyport, the homes, the two families, the apartments, the outbuildings, the in-law apartments, the condos, any hard and fast rules that apply to all the situations equally is bound to have some weaknesses. This development exposes how the rights of the developer to maximize their profit surpass the rights of the citizens to enjoy their homes and their yards and their neighborhoods. Might it be time to reexamine the laws on the books that no longer reflect the city's needs? Perhaps we need to enact a more local restriction that's aimed at this exact scenario, filling in backyards. I am not, nor is anyone I know that is involved in this discussion suggesting that this house stay the way it is, or that we want to stop all development. We are simply saying, scale it back. Work within the existing footprint with a modest addition. Make two lovely backyards that will serve the future owners well. We, as a community, and as neighbors, feel powerless to the developers and their lawyers, and we're asking you as a committee to see that the groundswell of support here is to contain this kind of flagrant infringement on our quality of life in this city. We thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Badger. And moving on, let's see, we will try again Ms. Carol Zamprona to see if if she's able to unmute. It appears we do hear you, Ms. Zamprona. Can you hear us?
Yes, and thank you for your patience with my technical difficulties. This is Carol Zamprona, Carol Zamprona of 20 Olive Street, the director of Butter to this property. Over the past, over the past five months, the residents of Olive and Russia Street stood together in opposition to the application by this developer for a special permit. To date, neighbors, abutters, and in fact, the Newburyport Preservation Trust have attended what is now six public hearings, written letters, and are spoken out before both the Historical Commission, and as a reminder, two of their members do not support this project, and the ZBA. We have spoken in opposition to this project, enduring numerous continuances along the way. In the last 48 hours, over 80 concerned citizens from neighborhoods across the city who oppose undesirable infill projects like this one have signed a petition. To quote just one of them, Mary Gibney of Newburyport has stated, "We need thoughtful stewardship of the ZBA members to protect the character of our historic neighborhoods from undesirable development." I'm going to respect the time of this committee and not read aloud all those 80 names, although I do hope you take the time to review that list. As you are aware, granting of a special permit is discretionary. The fact that the standards are not met for two-family use on the slot size should alone be enough for you to deny their special permit. Besides, if the process for obtaining a special permit for two-family use was simply about checking boxes, why conduct public hearings on the matter at all? The voice of the people who actually live in the neighborhood should not be discounted or ignored. Who better to determine what is most desirable for the neighborhood, the people who live in the immediate area or a developer? The proposed two-family project at 22 to 24 Olive Street sets a dangerous precedent for other properties in Newburyport that are likely candidates for renovation and/or development. The mass and scale of this project are simply too big for the neighborhood, as we have stated in all previous meetings. Our secondary concerns include traffic and parking that will inevitably arise, traffic issues that will inevitably arise from the four-car parking proposed for Russia Street, a short, very narrow street, and also Olive Street, which is frequently congested. The neighborhood is in support of a reasonable development of the property that preserves its existing footprint and two-family use in a manner that conforms to the character and size of other homes and protects the historic character of our neighborhood. We welcome your support in denying this proposal as it stands currently. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Zamprona. And recognizing next Micah Donahue. You have the floor. If you could just unmute your mic and just give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Micah Donahue at 16 Olive Street, the white Greek revival that's on Slide 17 of the presentation. The, I'll refer to the petition that Carol mentioned and read a couple of those comments so that it's easy and clear for everyone to understand where the city residents stand on these, on this project. The first is my own comment, and that's that the ZBA cannot change the past, but you can guide us to protect the future. You can protect the character of our historic neighborhoods from irreversible infill and thoughtless developers. That's exactly why zoning that would prevent this in any other case was enacted. This, you know, this requirement for number of square feet on the lot that the project does not meet, as Carol's attorney stated, is exactly why you should deny this. One other comment from another Olive Street resident, Joshua Porter of 454 Olive, from the comments in the petition. I'm signing this because this project plan is careless and adds unnecessary and unsightly density to a historic neighborhood. I've lived in this neighborhood for 18 years, and this would become one of the worst and egregious properties overnight. You can just see the amount of opposition to this, and I think you'll hear more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. And I, and if I might add, if once you've, once you've spoken your fill, I guess, for lack of a better term, if I could ask you to lower your hand, just so that we can know that you're not seeking to be recognized again, that we can just continue to move through the list. So unless you had something else to offer, I will just ask folks, once you've spoken, if there's something else, just kindly lower the hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Moving to, it looks like Stephen Bottich. We'll recognize Mr. Bottich, and you can just unmute your mic at the bottom of your screen, and you have the floor. Mr. Bottich, I'm not sure if you can hear us. It looks like your microphone is still muted, bottom left of your Zoom screen. If you could unclick that, that'll open your mic for us. There you are. Can you hear us, Mr. Bottich? We seem to have a little difficulty with Mr. Bottich's microphone, so we'll press pause there for a moment. We'll circle back to you, sir. In the meantime, I'll recognize Mr. Thomas Colter John. Mr. Colter John, if you could unmute your mic and just give your name and address for the record, and you have the floor.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Thank you. Tom Colter John, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. The trust continues to oppose this project in its current form. It still needs to be reduced significantly in size. It will have a detrimental impact in this neighborhood if it is approved. The massing and sheer size and scale of this proposed building detracts from the neighboring houses. If it were in a different neighborhood, surrounded by large lots, it would be another matter altogether, and it could be a pleasing design, but not here. This proposal distorts the corner lot to become more dominant. Pretty visual pictures of how it is intended to look when completed do not do the impact on the neighborhood justice. Comparing this project to a row house built for factory workers from a different time period makes no sense. You have heard comments from many neighbors and abutters who are not in favor of this project. Please listen to them and continue this hearing. We would love to see the historic house restored and a modest addition added. This developer is perfectly capable of doing so, but needs your direction to attempt that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colter John. We're going to circle back to, let's see, I no longer see that hand. I'm not sure if, Mr. Bottich, you still wish to be recognized, but I don't see that hand any longer. So there you are. Actually, Mr. Bottich, you want to give it another try? You want to unmute your mic, the bottom left, and you have the floor, sir. Looks like your microphone's unmuted, Mr. Bottich, but we can't hear you.
Chair, this is Andy Port. If I could just note for the record, there is a phone number also provided on the website that may also provide an ability for someone to call in. There is ability to raise hand in that, I think by pressing star nine. So just wanted to let people know that there is another option if you're having difficulty with your computer connection.
I appreciate you pointing that out. Andy, could you just read the telephone number again for the, for all those that are in attendance, and Mr. Bottich in particular? Mr. Bottich, if you can hear us, Mr. Port's going to read the telephone number. If you'd like to try to call in, we'll see your number pop up. We'll give it a, we'll give it a third swing at bat for you while we move along.
Yep. So that number is 1-646-558-8656. And there is a webinar ID number that's 283-4477-93.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Port. And Mr. Bottich, hopefully we'll see you circle back. In the meantime, I'm going to recognize Ms. Stephanie Nikicich. Ms. Nikicich, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Nikicich, 93 High Street. I appreciate all of the comments by abutters, especially about the lack of the lot size needed in the R2 or a two-family. But I would like to comment again about the applicant's emphasis on the Secretary of the Interior standards. The standards for additions also address an historic building's site setting and environment. This building's setting and environment is an historic neighborhood. The land behind the building has always been open. As I understand it, it was originally gardens for the old women's home. So historically, it has been space for both the occupants and the neighborhood to enjoy, and part of the character of the neighborhood. The applicant has told you the justification for putting an entirely new building in this open space is to preserve the interior of the original building, which is already divided as a two-family. The significance of remaining interior features was never discussed with the Historical Commission. Preserving historic interiors is a noble goal, and something the preservation community supports. But without a preservation restriction, which the applicant has not offered as a condition, that goal is meaningless as a justification for zoning relief. Without a PR, once relief is granted, the applicant or any subsequent owner can gut the building. Without a PR, interior and exterior, any subsequent owner can also damage the exterior of the historic building. I'm afraid there is something cynical about all of this, including, as abutters have said in letters, the likelihood that future owners will be back very soon wanting to increase lot coverage with replacement accessory buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nikicich. I do not see any additional hands. I wanted to take a moment to see if we saw Mr. Bottich try to circle back, but I don't. And in the interest of keeping things moving, I am forced to close that portion of the public hearing and move on. Actually, oh, I thought I saw one momentary hand. And in the interest of keeping things moving, I, I'm forced to close that portion of the public hearing and move on. Actually, oh, I thought I saw one momentary hand. Seeing no further hands, going once, going twice, Francis Moore. It looks like, looks like we have a hand popping up. I'm going to try to recognize Francis Moore. If you, if you can unmute your mic on the bottom left, you, you have the floor. You could just give your name and address, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so my name is Francis Moore, and I live at nineteen Olive Street. I've been here for fifty years. Not that that really makes any difference, but it does to me. What I'm sort of feeling is there's, there's laws, and there's the letter of the law, and there's the spirit of the law. And I feel that with Lisa Mead and this developer, the, the letter of the law is just going to crush the spirit of the law. And to have a civil society, we need to have both, and we need to be able to respect both. But it kind of falls apart when you feel like the, the, the letter just gets trampled, the, the letter just tramples the spirit. And it just, it, what we lose is we lose a sense of community, of neighborhood, and a generosity of spirit. And I also have two questions beyond that, which is, why are the windows so tiny on the side that faces twenty Olive Street on the new part that's being added on? They look like little prison windows. It's really ugly. And then second, how many condos can a person fit into this once they have added the hyphen and the whole new house? How many, can, can they just add as many condos as they want in there, dividing it up into, in, in the interior? And is that a different board that, that does that? It just seems to me if we expand this in terms of, of size, who controls what happens in the interior? And how many people end up living there? Thank you very much, and I appreciate this board for taking the time and consideration of all that we have to say. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, and looking at our list of attendees, I do not see any further hands. Oh, I, I do see, I'm not sure if this is intended, Ms. Badger and Ms. Hallett. Do you wish, do either of you wish to be heard again, or are your hands just, just, just continue to be up in air? I'm happy to recognize another, another comment, if it can, of course, could be brief. Ms. Badger, would you, do you wish to be heard again?
Yes, I would like to be heard. Actually, what I'm going to do is give the microphone to Steve Bowditch, and he hasn't had any success. So if you can hang in for thirty seconds, I'm transferring that to him. Oh.
We'll patch you through a passing satellite. This is, this is
All right.
This is good work. We want to hear. Yes, is this Mr. Bodich or Mr. Badich?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir. You, you have the floor.
For heaven's sakes. All right, hold on for a second. For heaven's sakes.
That's quite all right. We, do, do you want a moment? I, I see another hand, and I can move along and circle back if you wish.
Hello.
Yes, Ms. Badger, if you'd like, I can circle back and give you a moment.
Okay, all right.
Olive Street. I'm a resident of Olive.
I'm sorry, guys. I, I hate to do this. It looks like, Ms. Badger, your mic is muted again. I'm going to give you a moment to try to see if you can sort that out, you and Mr. Bodich, while we recognize another hand or two, and we, I promise you, I'll, I'll circle back in just a moment. So with that, I see a hand raised. I don't have a full name. It's just J E R then capital L. If that sounds like your screen name, I, I wish to recognize you. If you can unmute your mic, bottom left. And Andy, if you could promote, promote that caller to the, to the panel, you have the floor. Oh, we see you, ma'am, but you, if you could unmute your mic on the bottom left of your screen, then we'll be able to hear you as well.
Are you talking to me, Amy?
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Badger, we're not. We're, I will circle back.
Okay, thank you.
Now I think I'm working.
You are. We hear you, ma'am. If you could give your name and address for the
Hey, I'm on. This is Carol Rulo from twenty-six Olive Street. I'm on a butter facing Russia Street. And I think what said it all was that this project was not economically viable to keep as a two-family. And therefore, it was converted to the front historic building being made into a one-family. And I think the purpose was just so that it could be a home worth more than a million dollars, not that the developer was planning to live in it and to make more of a profit. I think the addition was being added. And as beautiful as the architectural drawings are, I don't think they're realistic and quite to scale because it's not showing vehicles in the open space where there, where there's parking. It's just showing beautiful landscape parking spaces, and that's not actually what's, we're going to be looking at. So I think the whole thing with this project, which bothers me the most, is that there aren't going to be people living in here that are determining the destiny of it and how to make it more beautiful or how to make it more relivable. It's basically all being based on how much of a profit margin they can get out of this property. And I realize in Newburyport, any open space would be considered a goldmine. But I think the only people getting wealthy off of it are not the people living here. It's either the people developing these areas or the attorneys working for these people. And I would just like to see neighborhoods stay as neighborhoods with people that buy properties that get listed and that actually live in them rather than the speculation that seems to be going on. And those are my only comments, and I, I really am looking forward to seeing this property cleaned up and the historic nature of the original house maintained. That part I don't have an issue with, but I do have a problem with the way it's being done. So I hope you'll take this under consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And Ms. Badger, I'm going to give another shot at seeing if we could open your mic again and allow, I believe it was Mr. Badich or Bodich, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing the last name, but if you want to unmute your mic and give it another whirl, I'd be happy to try to recognize you now.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can.
Great. This is Steve Bowditch, twenty-one Olive Street. I've been a resident at this address for twenty years, and I'm also in opposition to this development. I'd like to read a couple of comments from the petition that was submitted, where we have virtually eighty signatures at this point. This is from Pete Witten, who is a resident of State Street. Pete Witten, who signed this, said, "We need thoughtful stewardship of the ZB members to protect the character of our historic neighborhoods, neighborhoods from undesirable development. And we would classify this development as undesirable because we feel as neighbors and as abutters that it significantly diminishes the character of the neighborhood." I'd also like to read my statement that I submitted to this petition as well, that we need to know, we need to let developers know that just because they can does not mean they automatically should be allowed to carry on with developing willy-nilly, creating infill. The rights of residents should outweigh the rights of the developer when the residents feel the project significantly different, diminishes their neighborhood character and way of life. We, I specifically feel that this development by its mass, by its increased curb cuts, by its sheer volume, how it blocks light and air, is a significant issue. And I would also urge you to read with some care a letter that was submitted by Ned and Patricia McGrath. There, they are, Ned is a past member of the Historical Commission, and he speaks specifically about the, the property at twenty, at twenty-five to thirty-five Olive Street. And he says that we should not consider a nineteenth-century structure as we look into the twenty-first century. That structure was built nearly over a hundred years ago, and it should not be used as a placemaker or as an example of how much lot coverage a house can afford. The current structure right now at twenty-two, twenty-four Olive Street is a perfectly livable two-family house. It could be maintained as a two-family house with a modest addition. There's absolutely no need for an eighteen-hundred-square-foot addition with a hyphen. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowdich. And with that, I believe we've gone through the, the entire, looks like the roster of all those who wish to be heard. So I will go ahead.
Thank you very much, Amy.
I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing, and we will now go into questions from the board. And with that, we will, we will begin with Mr. Moore.
Unmuting and I'm back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start out by asking a pretty simple question, attorney, I mean, I think you mentioned you were going to offer up site visits, and you were, the property was going to be staked out. I visited the site again today and noticed that there were stakes on the property. So I just wanted to confirm that the stakes that I, that I viewed this afternoon did outline what the proposed footprint would be.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Yes, right after the last hearing, the applicant staked out the proposed addition, and you are correct. Those, that is the proposed addition.
Okay, thank you. And I wondered if you could also now bring up the, it was the, the aerial MIMAP that, that showed the location of the property and included, I just forget which panel it was, and included what the addition, with the addition in the back in comparing it to the neighborhood. So that's it right there.
That's correct.
Now, is this done to scale by the best of ability? I mean, is it, and how is determined that that's the lot coverage? Because when I compare that to probably the last aerial view, three D from Tektronix, that doesn't seem to represent the same lot coverage, looking at that versus the aerial view using three D technology.
Sure, I'm going to have Ernie address that. So if you look here, and then if you go to the, to the last slide, I think that part of it's because there are different views of different elevations. So Ernie, if you want to address the scale situation.
Twenty-two panel, twenty-two versus this.
Right.
The, the map from the city of Newburyport is taken from your town's website. It's blown up proportionally as we zoom in and out of the drawing, but how that exists within your town's files is what we're using. We haven't changed anything about the scale of that, that file.
But the addition.
Panel twenty-two and, and look at that spacing with the spacing on this. That's just my.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mark. So the addition, Ernie, that it was placed on that MIMAPs, that's in scale to the proposed addition versus the backyard, I think is Mark's question.
Yeah, our, our drawings are to scale despite any comments previously, our, our, our drawings are entirely to scale, both in two dimensions and three dimensions. So why it might appear otherwise is not known to me. I know that our models are generated through carefully measured drawings and placed on GPS on the sites. And the sites are the information that we have through the same mapping techniques that everyone else uses.
So in your opinion, this would be the more accurate depiction of lot coverage of the project in, in its completion versus the Newburyport-generated MIMAP?
Well, I don't know which is more accurate or less accurate. I can only say that I can absolutely assure you that our drawings as drawn are accurate.
Okay, appreciate that.
If I could just follow up with that too, Mr. Moore, I would also say to you that Ernie actually went out with, I believe, with the surveyor, and they did do the, the measurements that are represented on those plans as opposed, as to distances between structures are accurate.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions, any more questions at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swanton, questions?
Yes, I've heard a couple of different numbers this evening for how big this addition is. I realize we're knocking down some outbuildings and the old addition that's currently on the back of the building. But, but forgetting the outbuildings, I mean, what is the house with its addition? How much is it growing? Is it fifteen hundred feet? Is it eighteen hundred feet? What is it?
So, Mr. Swanton, we, the square footage of new construction is one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four square feet. However, we're demolishing four hundred and ninety-three square feet. So the net is one thousand four hundred and ninety-one square feet of new square feet.
I think that, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. My next question is, it was reported at our minutes of the last meeting, which we haven't approved yet, but that the statement was made last, at our last hearing, that a single-family house that is larger than the proposal could be constructed without, without relief. So I'm, I'm confused. Can we build a house that's larger than a fifteen hundred, that's a fourteen hundred and ninety-one square foot addition without relief?
So you, if I could, Mr. Swanton, there is, so you can't exceed the lot coverage, right? So you have to stay at the twenty-five percent lot coverage. But the way the addition fits on the house and the height of it is significantly different. And I believe you got a piece of correspondence from Ms. Nikicich, which in fact has a sketch plan of a single-family home that is by right, which includes a two-car garage with a room over and a connector. So whereas this building is smaller and more petite, for example, than the existing structure, the proposed, or the by right, not, certainly not proposed, but the by right, the by right plan includes a taller addition with more square footage. I would say to you that, that, that plan, that by right plan, you know, as any, as any builder does when they buy a piece of property, they kind of go through a, a, a design process. You know, what am I going to do? What can I do? What's the most appropriate thing to do? And so they looked at the single-family option, which would not have required any permits other than a building permit. And they, you know, then they looked at this option, which of course requires review, and they believe is more sympathetic to the, to neighborhoods, certainly, and certainly to the existing structures. So the answer is, it's a slight, slightly bigger as far as lot coverage is concerned, because it takes it up to the twenty-five percent. And it's certainly in bulk and height larger.
Okay, but e- even though that by right addition would be adding more than five hundred square feet, you're saying that would not require a special permit?
That's correct, because the lot, it meets a single-family home requirements. Right.
I saw that drawing, though, and it looked, that drawing certainly looked like it, it added a lot, but I, I get it. All right. Well, I'll move on to a different area, which is parking. There's been quite a few comments made about the Russia Street being a challenging street during many months of the year. And you're proposing to add four more parking spaces over there, as shown in this drawing. Had you perhaps given any consideration to not having both of those parking areas and having the building on Not having both of those parking areas and having the building on Olive Street continue to use the parking that it currently uses, the tandem spaces next to it.
Um, sure, you know, it's and that's an interesting comment, because this is a currently a two family that's nonconforming for parking. And we're proposing it to stay a two family and meet the parking requirements, actually exceed it by one parking space. So there is no more, I just want to take the opportunity to say there's no more density, so to speak, in the neighborhood by use, which was suggested earlier. I think that it was considered, you would have to make that parking lot a little bit longer to make it actual two full. Two full parking spaces off of Olive Street, which would take a little bit of that backyard away. So it would be, that would be more pavement on that side of the of the street. And, you know, I guess then you would do two, it's, you know, it's not as attractive to homeowners, of course, not to have two right outside their door, but you could do it and meet the two requirements, but you wouldn't have an extra space.
Right. Okay, I'm just trying to understand the different points that have come up. The. Showed the interior of the the brick building. And you know, we don't tend to get into historic preservation things. But I thought it interesting, the comment that was made by one of the people in the hearing that. It may be nice that you are showing that, but there's no preservation restriction on the building to make sure that brick building stays the way it is. I just want to give you a chance. Is there any restriction proposed for that? Is that part of your plan? Or are you just kind of showing a mess as, you know, what you're thinking about doing?
So I I think that Ernie showed that to show what the challenges were inside. We're not currently proposing an interior restriction. I wouldn't take that off the table, just as though I wouldn't take off the table the parking spaces if those were if those were critical to the board's decision. So obviously, in our current format, it's kind of difficult to have immediate conversations with with one another. And so I I certainly hear what you're saying, and I could have that conversation.
My last question really has to do with with the common theme that I've heard from so many of the neighbors, which is just. Uh, some people say the addition should be more modest. Some people say it should, I mean, a whole variations on the word modest. And I'd like to give you a chance to address that. I mean, have you considered, I mean, were any alternatives considered that were more modest?
So I guess the answer is as part of that whole design process, right? There was a, there was an original consideration to overlay the, to bring the addition over to the existing structure and overlay the roof. But that is not a desired method of of modification. The addition, the living space in the new addition is eighteen hundred square feet. And I understand that, you know, in some instances, some people might think that that's large, but in other instances, they don't. I would respectfully suggest that all of those who suggested that that this addition is taking up all the light and air and space on this lot is just not true. And I think that's particularly visible from this viewpoint as compared to the rest of the structures in the area. And similarly, it's not quite at twenty five percent, which is the lot coverage. And we use a percentage, because if you use square footage versus a lot, almost every single one of these lots in this neighborhood are persisting nonconforming. And nobody would be able to have lot coverage on a square footage basis as opposed to a percentage basis. So the answer is yes, there was some consideration given to a a different kind of addition. And this is what was the result.
Okay, I have no other questions at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chen.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'm gonna jump off of. The direction Mr. Swan was going, I I think, you know, one of the things we're hearing from. Our city folk, you know, our neighbors has to go to towards what Mr. Swan was saying. And and that's modesty versus a large addition. Um, I think, although I think this is very tastefully done, I think it's a wonderful architectural addition. It's a beautiful building. I I think we have to listen to our to our neighbors and then we have to understand that. You know, this seems like a fairly large project. To get a bigger two family. It's an existing two family, which I I agree is small by today's standards, if you cut the house in half. But it just seems like there should have been architecturally and structurally a way to add a more modest addition and get two reasonably sized. You know, buildings using the main building and and putting some type of modest addition on the back. And and I know you're probably not prepared to come up with, you know, Plan B. But but I I think that I think that's what we're hearing is, again, all this, although this is tastefully done, it's it's quite large. In comparison to the existing house that it's attached to and and it's the surrounding area. I, you know, I think something that was a little bit smaller, a little more modest, we as a board would probably be more inclined to support. And I think, you know, there'd be less opposition from from the rest of the folks in the city. So I I I appreciate that, you know, there was a discussion on the interior of the main house as as to how difficult it is to split that in half. But, you know, I've seen some pretty strange projects where additions are attached to homes. And, you know, both the kitchens and the masters are on the back and put the house down the middle, whatever. I I just think that this has gone, you know, a little too far. And and I think as Mr. Swan said, there should have been more consideration towards more modest. I know that's not a question. I I guess I'm jumping on Mr. Swan's comment, you know, should there have been a more more deliberations done by by the builder? Who possibly have a more modest presentation? And would they consider that? Because I think. I I think we're hearing quite a bit of opposition to the size and scale and massing of of this addition. That that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chen. Uh, Mr. Bennet, what what say you, sir?
Just one question to close the loop. The the new unit addition is eighteen hundred feet. What's the existing structure? How many square feet living area?
I'm gonna let Ernie answer that question, Ernie.
Okay, well, the. When you say the new building is eighteen hundred square feet. That does not take into account the four hundred and ninety three square feet that we are removing.
No, here's my my question is simple. There are two units. Please tell me the square footage of each of the units.
Okay. On. Unit one, which is. Is nineteen hundred. I'm sorry, eighteen hundred and fifty one.
I didn't, say that again, please.
One thousand eight hundred and fifty one.
Okay.
And three thousand one hundred and twenty five.
Okay.
And one thing to just respond to the chain of comments that has been made over the last couple of minutes. You know, there have been many, many iterations of these plans over the last six to eight months. The developer has not just come forward with his first pass. I know we've done many iterations. We came around to this method of adding to this building as a result of understanding the structure, the two hundred year old structure better and better over time. There was. There are, for example, there was a bracing wall that was removed by someone through the years on the first floor of the existing building. A minor, a very minor structural bracing wall. But when you walk on the second floor of the building, you can feel the floors bounce. And. People need to understand that when you have a two hundred year old timber building, you have to look at it holistically. That you just cannot pick and choose which walls and stairs to tear down as though it doesn't affect the whole. And one of the advantages of building slightly larger outside as opposed to replacing the five hundred square feet that we tore down is that it allows us to maintain the character and integrity of the original building. Building a more modest addition, as has been discussed over the last several comments, will have a dramatic impact structurally on the interior of this building. We'll be forced to rip out elements of the building that have been in place for a couple of hundred years. And we'll have to do all sorts of supplemental framing and reframing and reinforcing of the existing structure to make that structure sound again when we start removing the parts. It isn't as though those parts are independent in the way modern buildings are built. This is a frame where all the pieces work together as a whole. So when we began to understand the structure better, our goal was to preserve as much of it intact as possible, because that's good for the building. And our goal is to leave behind a building that is substantially intact from what it was for the last two hundred years.
Any questions, Mr. Bennet?
How how many bedrooms in the the new addition?
Ernie, can you answer that question?
I'm I'm looking for the 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 new addition as three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms.
Any further questions, Mr. Bennet?
Not at this time.
Okay. I I don't have any additional questions that my colleagues haven't already posed. In fact, one or two of the questions were exactly questions I had as well, so.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, could I, I I realize I missed a question that I wanted to ask if I could, if I could jump back in.
Go ahead.
Attorney me, it refers to one of the. Charts that you provided to us as as comps, the immediate neighborhood. Spreadsheet, I guess, for lack of a better title. Nine total structures were included in this study. And I had a question on the finished area. Determination. Where you stated that it was, this proposal would would result in a third most finished area of the immediate neighborhood. I just wondered how you came up with that, because I I couldn't make the math work out.
Are you asking about the one, the submission we made a a a meeting ago, Mr.?
Yeah, I believe that's probably what it was. Yeah.
So hang on a second. So.
There was a lower Olive Street, Washington to Merrimack comp laid out and there's immediate neighborhoods. I'm on the immediate neighborhood. Comps.
Right. So first of all, you know, it's it's interesting. So we have the finished area we took from the assessors records, of course, from the other ones. And I'm looking at, I think I'm looking at the right, the immediate neighborhood slide.
Correct.
So we have twenty two to twenty four finished area per ten thousand square feet. Is that the one you're looking at?
Uh, it's the first, just the first column, I guess, it's if you go over the top, the in in the base, it's the you have second largest lot on Olive Street next to this third most finished area. So it's just the finished area column that I'm looking at here.
Third most finished area. Okay, so.
So down the bottom, you have five thousand and ten.
Right.
And that would be third compared to, I mean, if you included the.
Well, twenty five to thirty five Olive Street, right, twenty five to thirty five Olive Street is one structure. So that's twelve thousand four hundred and sixty. Twenty one to twenty three Olive Street, excuse me, eighteen to twenty Olive Street is one structure. Even though those are two units and that's, so that total is seven thousand or something like that, right? You see that combined three thousand.
Well, the second column is lot size, the third column is finished area, right? So so it's the fifteen seventy five plus the sixteen thirty five gets you your combined.
Right, so you've got thirty two ten.
Yeah.
Right, and then you've got.
Seventy three hundred of all those, the row, the row.
Right, so it would be, right, so it would be second.
Second, not third, right?
Right, yeah, that would be second.
And then if you did not include that, it obviously would be first by over fifty percent if you don't include the comment. And I I just have, that's if you include the the twenty five to thirty five, which I'm, you know, it's it's been pointed out. And I'm kind of wondering how great a comp that is, other than being in the immediate neighborhood, how great a comp it is for adding on to a. You know, a a structure. That was a large two family home that's not going to be turned into a larger two family home.
So, so for, I don't know how you cannot say that it's not a comp. I mean, it's right across the street and it's one solid building on one lot, right? The other thing is forty five Olive Street is larger, and I'm not sure why it's not on here. That's why, I think that's why you say not the immediate neighborhood. Forty five Olive Street is larger at, I don't have the number in front of me, hang on a second. Here it is, five thousand ninety seven square feet, if you go to the next page. So forty five Olive Street is five thousand ninety seven. That's why we said it was third. It should have been on here, too.
Okay, see that? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's why it's third. And I I just don't see how you can discount a building that exists right across the street, because it exists and it is all one building on one lot.
Fair enough. All right, thank you. No more questions, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other member of the ZB have any other questions before we close this portion out and go into deliberations? Uh, seeing no other questions, I'm gonna go ahead and close this portion of questions from the board. And we will go into deliberations. Uh, we'll begin now with Mr. Moore and we'll, I'll ask that as we liberate, that we endeavor to deliberate or tailor our deliberations around the legal criteria that exist for a special permit for nonconformities. The application. The application is, again, twenty two twenty four Olive Street. So with that, Mr. Moore, you want to kick things off?
Why not? Okay, in looking at this proposal, it's been. It's been shown that there are going to be no new nonconformities in this plan. So we move on to the interesting, more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood portion, which I believe is where the butters and neighborhood comments have all. And almost universally leaned in one direction. And the board considers, as we all know, size, scale, massing, volume and location of proposed structure as compared to what's there now. While this addition. Architecturally attractive. Attempts to follow or or does follow using the hyphen Secretary of Interior standard for an addition to an historic building. This aerial view depicts a view of the of the structure that the neighborhood really doesn't get. They get the view of walking up and down the sidewalk and. You know, and and seeing the size, scale, massing of this building attached to a building in in my estimation. And as far as this, you know, point was made. That the structure shouldn't be highly physical, visible from the street. It is, and the secretary's comments also, when using this kind of addition state that it should only be considered after is determined that the new use can't be met by altering. The secondary interior spaces. And this is where the ZBA purview gets a little bit into the gray area where, you know, we have asked for detail on what's happening with the main structure with respect to the addition in in trying to determine whether. Every, and and I believe it was addressed a couple of comments ago by the architect. And that structurally, they would have to do a lot more changes if this hyphen wasn't used. But again, in in looking at this addition from ground level, the level where the butters live, not bird's eye view. I just don't see how it's not substantially more detrimental to that open space in that neighborhood. As has been brought up by. Many, many butters, so I'm I'm having a hard time on that respect. Many, many butters, so I'm, I'm having a hard time on that respect, size, scale, massing, having a hard time doing this. Supporting this right now. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. We're going to go to Mr. Swanton next, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I think somebody made the comment that this is actually a pretty nicely done building. You know, it looks pretty in this picture, but the problem is where it's going. I can think of quite a few streets in our city that this would be perfect for, but. I too have a concern about the resulting massing in this dense historic neighborhood. This picture kind of looks like it grew a second house. And I. And I'm glad my colleague, Mr. Moore, just pointed out the Secretary Standards talk about. You know, it could be. It meets a lot of them, except for the fact if it was in the back. If this was, if Russia Street wasn't there and this was just kind of tucked back there, it would be easier, but. It's so prominent, this picture shows it very well. So to me, it's the massing that is. Like somebody else said in the last meeting, what if it was more modest addition that kind of came off the back of this large beautiful house? You know, I don't think we'd see the ground swell of opposition. And I don't think we should only listen to the butters, but I think the butters do have an important role, it is their neighborhood. And, but I think they're pointing out something that's very valid and part of our criteria. Which is to consider the relative massing in the neighborhood for which it's proposed. So I too am having a hard time kind of getting comfortable with what's being proposed. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Chen.
Thank you, Chair, I think I'm going to say a little bit more of the same. Again, kudos to to the design, it's a very architecturally attractive building. I like the way it's set back from the the primary building, the way it's subordinate. And I think all of that, great design cues. You know, if this, if it wasn't as big as it is, and if it didn't sit on this lot where it can be seen from, you know. From the street, I think it would not have gotten such, you know, ill support, if you will, from the neighbors. I think, you know, we do have to listen to our neighbors and in looking at it, I think size, scale and massing and the location. Do come into play where it, we could certainly argue that it is more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think again, if it was a smaller addition, more modest, possibly. More closely attached to the main house and I understand that gives some structural problems. It might, it might have been a little bit easier for everyone to swallow, but. I have to agree with my colleagues and I guess most of the folks that have spoken tonight and have written in. And been part of the petition that I think it is. It is probably inappropriate for this neighborhood. It's all Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chen, Mr. Bennet.
I. Seem to be coming around to the same position, I, I will say that in the abstract. I think this is a thoughtful. Well-designed project. And as my colleagues have said, in another place, this would be getting. Substantial support from us, but when I look at the guidelines, we have to. Apply here, a couple of things stand out first. This lot is significantly. Smaller than would be alt-otherwise permitted for a. To, to, to as an structure, it's about 4,500 feet, I think. Smaller, I think, am I, am I right, it's. I was just trying to understand that, I guess, I guess. The, it's non-conforming 15,000 is the requirement, we have 10,758. A foot lot here, so we're nearly over 3,200 or so, my math is correct, 4,200. So, square feet in terms of a non-conforming lot. And then. The improvement here or the addition here is. You know, a net of 1,400 feet over, so it's, it increases substantially the overall. Way in which the lot is being used for residential purposes and. I think in that respect, I find that the. Proposal as compared to the existing lot. Will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and in passing, I note that. I, I'm on board with maintaining this as a two-family structure. And I also note, however, that this is in the city and an 1,800 foot. Addition is quite large, I mean, three bedrooms and two and a half baths. Is in my view, a large addition here and it just strikes me as as being. Not in keeping in terms of scale, massing and volume relative to what this lot should support.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, attorney me.
I'd like to request a continuance to the January 11th meeting.
January 11th, let me just take a quick look and see what our docket looks like for January 11th. And you know what, Caitlin, do you happen to have that up at the moment?
I do, right now there are two public hearings scheduled.
Okay, great, I just couldn't lay hands on it, that seems fine, attorney me, let's, let's just. We'll, we will suspend further deliberations and. And move on your request to continue to January 11th and I'll do that right now. Members of the ZBA attorney meet, as you heard, is requesting a continuance to, to the 11th of January meeting, looks like we have room. Do we have a motion to continue the matter for further hearing to January 11th?
So moved.
Great, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Motion is made by Mr. Moore and submitted by Mr. Swanton on the applicant's request to continue. This application for further public hearing to the ZBA hearing of January 11th, calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chen. Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, it's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries and the matter is continued to January 11th and. For all those in attendance, please feel free to log back in for the January 11th hearing. And this matter, as all continuances typically are, will be taken up at the top of the agenda, so we will. Look forward to picking things up then, thank you all for your patience and for your comments and for the applicant and the presentation materials. We'll see you all on the January 11th. Moving now to the next matter before us, this is a continuation of a public hearing by Derek Lively on the application. Of 28 Liberty Street, number five, this is docket 2021-57, it's. The applicant seeks unnecessary permits and approvals to construct a second story deck and stair within the required side yard setback. May we hear from the applicant, Mr. Lively, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we can hear you now, Derek.
Okay, great, hi, good evening, thank you. My name is Derek Lively, I'm a general contractor of KDJ Enterprises. And I'm filling out this application for my client and owner, Jeff Scanti, who resides at. Number 28 Liberty Street, unit number five. With this. We would. We're proposing to install a second level deck. Roughly 14 by 16 off the end unit condo. The deck will extend over the existing driveway in order. To allow for the parking to stay, the deck will need to extend across the driveway to allow access from the end unit. This is the applicant's driveway. We need the variance so that the deck can extend to allow for parking and to provide egress for all the units. Without this variance approval, the applicant cannot make usable, reasonable use of the space. When adding a deck like the other units have, have been permitted to have. This is. To make reasonable use of the space, we need to extend the deck across the driveway, leaving the space for parking and egress. These conditions would fall in line with the existing outdoor second level decks. That are on the same outline of the property. And the applicant is the only unit that does not have any outdoor deck space. The applicant is not asking for any special privilege because he is following the outline of the other units and current outdoor space. And so we move into. The location of the area which shows Center Street is aside. With the proposed deck at the second level. Which shows the shaded area underneath for parking. Bear with me, this is my first. Extensive presentation on this, so we'll just. Open up for some questions and I would like to also mention that I do have Jeff Scanti available and with me for comment. For any questions and things that may arise and I'm sure he'd like to add some things to the presentation.
Okay, good, Mr. Lively, was that, was that the extent of your part of the presentation or did you want us to recognize Mr. Scanti?
Yeah, you can recognize Mrs. Scanti as well at this point and we can collaborate together if we need to. We can go through. What I have is the construction of the second level deck as proposed here. In relation to the building, in relation to the other units. That have the outdoor deck along the back. And just to show the overlay of the proposed deck area. Where there once was an existing deck on that property, probably 20 years ago and there, there's no official record of it. But we're kind of putting back something that was. Pre-existing on that building at one time.
Okay. Mr. Scanti, would you, would you like to be, be heard at this time as well?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Chairman and members of the ZBA, I am Jeff Shanti, I'm the owner of 28 Liberty Street with my wife Joan. Unit number five, the existing structure that includes 28-32 Liberty Street or. Liberty Square condominiums is a unique property in that it takes up over 55% of the total lot coverage just in the building by itself. There is as little as 26% open space right now, with most of that dedicated to emergency egress area. In the back and the side yards and also the entry to the front of our buildings with some small driveway space in. The building itself and the association have no common space associated. The, the surrounding neighborhood of Liberty Street, Middle Street, Fair, Center, Federal and Independent. Almost all have some usable outdoor space for the dwellings. Either common outdoor space for the, for the individual units or common outdoor space for condo, condo. Buildings, 28 Liberty Street, unit number five is unique in that there is no outdoor space whatsoever, except for the parking and the emergency egress. Units one through four all have exterior rear slash side decks. Which are similar in structure to the one that was removed from the unit years ago. Elizabeth Mesh, she is the Liberty Square condo board treasurer, has provided a letter of support which indicates. The existence of the previous deck for unit number five. Ms. Miss in the association are also unaware the date that the deck was removed and replaced. With the spiral stair egress at the end of unit five. In the request for the proposed deck, there are no new nonconformities that would be created or made worse. The proposed deck would have a front two setback of 10 feet eight inches where currently six foot one exists. And provides a side setback of nine feet two inches where currently nine one exist. The existing rear setback of 16 nine does need to be reduced. But it's well within the current setbacks of the existing rear decks on units one through four. Which are currently less than five inches from the property line. The proposed deck is similar to the existing structures on both units one through four. The request and need for the setback in the rear, which is three foot two inches, is to preserve the existing. Two car parking as shown on the proposed site plan and seen as existing parking. And still maintain the emergency egresses for units one through five. A reduction in size of the deck had been contemplated and reviewed. But does not allow for the existing and available parking to be kept. The proposed plan does not impact any open space and takes advantage of use of the space over the existing two car parking area. The proposed plan is not detrimental to the area or unlike other structures within the immediate area. All the proposed materials and structures have been reviewed and supported by the building inspector. I just thank you and the board for your time and consideration.
All right, very good, thank you, sir. And Mr. Lively, anything further before we close the presentation portion and go to public comment and some questions from the board and such?
I didn't know if, if anybody wanted to go ahead and we could review some of the slides that are in here as well.
Oh, if you, so if you have slides, my suggestion is that you start from the beginning and walk us through every one of the slides. That's part of the, the importance of, of the, the presentation piece, which is, which is this piece of the, of the hearing, so. So this, this will be the time to do it, we can just kind of rewind slightly, give you the opportunity to just walk us through. Exactly what you're doing and, you know, sort of hit on the, the criteria that we're going to need to try to find specifically. Legal hardship because this is a variance and just walk us through what's there and what you have and it looks like Mr. Scanti has given us quite a bit of detail already.
Yeah. Okay, so if we start with, I'm trying to see where she is, yeah, that one looks good, Caitlin, there. Yep, that looks good, so this, this is the view. You know, from the rear of what it would look like with the cars that would park underneath those supports. Looking up at the, the second floor. Elevation, this is the fence level, what is marked rear on the, the first slide that we, that we were viewing. And that's just the view in the heights proposed, on the next slide. Down, it shows us. The, what it would look like from the Center Street side where there's currently parking. And what that would provide for the egress and, and the ability to park the cars in the, in the same space. And as we go down to the next slide. We have just the, the aerial view of where the legal spiral staircase is now. Exiting the door from the kitchen, we're just going to move it. Slightly back to the back of the deck where it's going to provide the access. Up to the deck from, from the ground floor. On the next slide. Was just the existing conditions of what is there with parking and again, you can see the spiral staircase location. With no outdoor space for unit five and no proposed deck in that slide. And the next slide. And the next slide, we see their proposed deck and the the relocation of the spiral staircase and the available parking that is existing in that space. We just have additionally beyond that is just some current views of some slides that show the existing conditions of where the other units have their their decks, the ability and the egress on the first floor to pass through and the abutting property line fence. And that's really all of the the slides and the presentation that we have put together. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lively and Mr. Scotty. We will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and go to our public comment section and I'll ask our planning director, Mr. Port, to put up the public comment slide and any members in attendance that wish to speak. Feel free to just raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen. We will recognize you by name. You can unmute your mic and just give your name and address for the record and let us know what your thoughts are. Going once, going twice, I see no hands. So I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing, noting that there is no public comment, no members in attendance that wish to be heard. We will now move on to questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Trupati. Because this is a variance application, their hurdle is is a little more difficult to meet with respect to of showing hardship and and I want to kind of ask a little more of an explanation about hardship other than we don't have a deck and everyone else doesn't. I totally understand why you'd want to have outdoor spaces. That's that's not the issue. It's the criteria for hardship pertain to the, you know, the lot size, the shape, the structure, topography of the land here. There are a lot of issues that go into hardship other than we would really like to have a deck. So I wondered if you could help a little bit more on explanation of why this isn't granting a special privilege, I guess, other than, you know, the other units have decks and you don't.
This is Jeff Shanti. If if you look at the lot itself, it is incredibly unique lot, kind of an L shaped. The building itself takes up almost the entire lot. I think when you look at most other condominium or condominium associations, there is the use of common space for an exterior outdoor area. This was granted with really almost all building allowed and then the parking. So the common space or or usable outdoor space really is available in units one through four with the decks. There is no other way to gain usable outdoor space in unit five unless you were to remove parking. And understandably, parking is such a difficulty and I would actually call it a hardship with the Newburyport to actually find available parking. So we did not want to eliminate any parking in our proposal.
Okay. I'll stop there and the colleagues pick it up from there. So no more questions from me.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I kind of want to pick up on that, but I just have one other little bitty question first, which is, I, you know, I'm familiar with these buildings. They're a little unique in that you there already is parking on the first floor underneath the buildings. Is that correct?
Yes. So depending upon which units there are parking for two cars in units one through four, unit five has tandem parking and really doesn't allow for two cars because it's only thirty four feet deep. So it's only one car.
So I see short tandem parking. So I understand. So that's why you're trying to maintain your spaces out back. Your comment that all your neighbors have decks. And this this picture here that's on the wall here shows it pretty well. They all do have decks. But they're small decks. They only go off the back of the house. It looks like, yeah, four or five feet. I mean, I can't really see it. This is such a small drawing. Have you considered ask just just doing a small deck like your neighbors rather than as kind of a supersized one that almost goes all the way to the property line?
Absolutely. So the other decks that are on there are actually based off of the distance from the house to the property line. As you can see, almost every one of them goes directly to or even slightly over the property line. We were looking at trying to do something that stayed within that width. We certainly wouldn't be able to have the same distance or length that others would based off of the length of the condo units. But in order to try and get that smaller space, we would lose both parking spaces because there would be no ability to drive a car into that area.
Yeah, except there are a lot of smaller decks in Newburyport that don't have a post that comes straight down, but instead are sort of cantilevered off the building. Is that something you consider?
Yeah, so it the cantilevered component was something that was ruled out based off of the cinder block construction that we have here and and the ability to be able to modify what the cinder block is on the on the back of the house. It would really almost require tearing out the back of the garage in totally new construction back there. It's just not a practicality.
I see. Yeah, I mean, well, picking up on what my colleague, Mr. Moore, was talking about, you know, a variance is kind of a high bar here in the city and you're proposing a very large deck that goes. I can't read this thing, but how close is it to the property line of your neighbor there? Could you block that little portion there?
It would be three foot two inches.
Yeah. Okay, I guess I've asked my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
But it looks like the proposed deck is fourteen by sixteen and I think from your presentation, you're indicating you would park two cars under it.
We currently park two cars in that space now, so we would be able to continue to park two cars there.
And you but the two cars you parked there, you parked side by side?
No, no, they parked. And I'm I'm not sure if I believe there is an aerial view currently now that shows the space with the two cars parked. I don't know if we can go to that. I believe it was in one of the pictures.
I guess the reason I'm asking, and I'll go back to Mr. Swan's comment that this is a this is a big debt compared to the other ones. Certainly, you don't need a fourteen foot wide deck to put one car under it. What's driving the fourteen feet? Cars are only six feet wide.
The fourteen foot width is is so that we can maintain the egress on the like up against the house that you can see there. What isn't really shown on here very well is that there's a fence that is currently on the property line that abuts Middle Street Foods. So I I wish we could show that picture because there there really is almost very little space between being able to open up your car door either to the left or to the right hand side. We actually did the fourteen feet because that was the smallest amount that allowed for being able to get out on both sides of the car and allowing for the egress up against the building.
I'm looking. I don't see that aerial as part of the presentation.
I believe that was in the previous submitted information. I don't know if you can still pull that up from the website.
I'm sorry, I don't have that right now.
Okay.
Safe to say, you think for doing two tandem cars, only one's going to fit under the deck? Or actually neither one's going to fit completely under the deck?
Correct.
They're both going to be halfway under the deck?
Correct.
Okay. A- as previous colleagues, it the variance is a much higher bar. Certainly, your lot shape is odd. I'll give you that. Just not sure. It still gets us there, but thank you. I have no other questions, Chair.
Mr. Bennet, sorry, I may have had my mic muted. Mr. Bennet, you are.
Just one follow up question. Do you do you have any knowledge as to the size of the original deck that apparently has been destroyed or removed?
We are we have the we have the recent owners. We've been here for the last three years. Ms. Mesh is the one of the owners who's been here the longest. She was not aware of how big the deck was, knew that there was a deck there and you can actually still see some of the markings on the side of the building from the deck, but no one was aware of what the actual deck size was. And and I do want to point out too that the the fourteen feet width was that was the part that we were really trying to maintain the minimum we could in order to be able to still maintain the two car parking. If we would be able to reduce that down in order to be able to maintain the parking there and open the doors and because of the fence being there, we would we would certainly be in favor of doing that.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I was the old deck constructed in the same fashion with these posts that you're proposing tonight? Do you know?
I would have no understanding or kind of knowledge of that. The only thing you can see on the side of the houses is the imprint of of the old deck on the side of the house.
Yeah. And just so I'm clear, the the decks, the maintenance of the decks are the responsibility of the condominium owners. Is that right?
Correct.
And have have you just going to ask you, can you describe briefly the materials that you're going to be using and particularly the kind of the wall or the guardrails that you'll be opposing here?
Yes, I believe Derek has that information.
It's the name brand is a TimberTech decking and rail system that would match kind of what's existing along what is there, not to stand out or wouldn't be too different as far as that's concerned. TimberTech is what I have here. What specifically, Chairman, are you asking of the?
Just curious about the materials and particularly the railing.
So the the actual railing itself, it's a it's a black rail system to to be similar to what is in the area. Previously, out back, they had some black fencing that was kind of like wrought iron look and and that's what this would be, that type of wrought iron.
That picture, is that what you're proposing?
Yes, yes. I was looking for it in the presentation myself. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And as far as the the variance is, there's only a few inches being asked for as far as, you know, where this is encroaching or why it's as large as it is. I don't think that it's it's not, we're not asking for an obnoxiously large oversized deck. I think it goes in line with the fact that, you know, Middle Street Foods fence does actually encroach over onto the other property, onto Jeff's property. And the that property line is skewed. So when you look at the fence line is not accurate as opposed to what actually Jeff owns as far as his property line is concerned. So if we were coming within just a few inches away of any type of criteria, I think that should be considered as well. And to allow for proper egress size and parking and like Jeff said, to just allow for the door to open is just just minimal. Thank you.
Oh, I have to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennet. I, you know, I have a couple of questions. And I think, as you may have heard, Mr. Scotty, Mr. Lively, you know, that there's a legal criteria that that no is a it's a shield and a sword for members of the ZBA. And that is to say that, you know, we are, you know, we are to a certain extent shackled to review every application through a very strict set of standards, legal standards and legal criteria, which we must find as a board in order to in order to vote favorably on especially an application for variance, which is really a high bar. It's a high standard because it requires not only that the board find that the application is, you know, meets the the legal criteria, but in particular, this one component that you probably have heard quite a bit about, which is this notion of a legal hardship. And it's important in some of what you've been hearing, and I echo some of it, I share it for what it's worth. What you've been hearing by some of my colleagues in an attempt to kind of tease out more information is, you know, you know, what is what is your presentation? How does your presentation present this legal hardship that isn't self imposed, self inflicted or financial, but rather is tied to the 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 shape and size, topography, hydrology of the the land and the lot itself. And and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I certainly don't mean to put any words in your mouth, but I I understand that, you know, big picture in the real world, we also are human beings, so we try to look at things, at least I I know. I'll speak just for myself and I know my colleagues share this sentiment, but I'll just speak from my review of how I view these things that, you know, it's a deck and it's a deck that replaces another deck and it's it's a little bit larger than the original deck, maybe even slightly more than a little bit. But I think I've heard some explanation as to why that was important for for your client and the owner, Mr. Scotty, whom we've heard from as well. And I'm also, I note that, as you may have heard, this board comment with the past application, you know, we we are moved by but not but but not enslaved by comments of neighbors. You know, that is to say that we respect and we look for that input. It's it's relevant and it's important. And it's important when it's included, but it's also important when it's absent. It says a lot to us. We try to really weigh heavily on on, you know, the big picture and part of that significantly to us is, you know, what what do the the folks closest impacted feel and have to say about a proposal? Every one of Mr. Scotty's abutters, legal abutters would have received notice of this. And I can't help but note, and I suspect my colleagues did as well, that we heard no opposition, which, you know, tells us quite a bit because, you know, when folks have a question or are impacted, you know, we hear from them. And that's an important part of the process. I don't, you know, there are no, there are no neighbors in opposition to this and it's a really close neighborhood. I know Liberty Street well. And, you know, many of us drive up and down this part of Liberty Street and it's easy to see it's very close community. So I guess my question to you, and this is partially a deliberation, you know, point, but but all of that leads up to my question, which is I noticed that there's no, there's no opposition. Have you have you or Mr. Scotty spoken with the direct neighbors? I know that we have a letter of support from the condo association trustee. Were there any other neighbors that you spoke to? And if so, is there any feedback that you can share with us that we don't otherwise already have?
Certainly, we had spoken to all of the members of the condo association, of which, you know, there are five units here, including us. There was no opposition. They were quite in favor of it. The only other abutter that I truly spoke to was the owner of Middle Street Foods because obviously he would be mostly impacted. And and he was in favor of it. He he was actually happy that I was. And, and he was in favor of it. He, he was actually happy that I was maintaining the fence there and, and keeping that privacy for his business and for the area that they have out back there. The only other thing that I do want to add to is, when it comes down to hardship, and I know for me, this is about parking too, and, and just maintaining parking, and that has been the most difficult aspect of all of this. Parking within the front of our buildings is not available to us because of an ordinance within the state of Massachusetts, which states that you are not able to park in front of a driveway. And if you look at the condos themselves, they are five driveways in a row. So parking is, is at an incredible premium within our units as it is within all of Newbury Port. And, and so that's been my focus on the hardship component and why it was so important that we be able to maintain parking and why the deck is the size that it was proposed.
So, and thank you, Mr. Scanti. And, and so my follow up question is, in the absence of this deck, I believe, could we go to the slide quickly, Andy, that shows the elevations where the deck is? The, thank you. So it looks like, right now, there's no deck. Is that right? The deck has been removed?
Yeah, so there, there hasn't been a deck here for quite a many years.
But it was originally there, but it's long since been removed, correct?
So the only thing that is there is a, is a set of egress stairs for the spiral staircase.
Okay. And and so the, but the egress stairs, they're a spiral staircase.
Correct, because it takes up the least amount of space for where the cars are right now. So you actually barely have enough space to get between the car and the spiral staircase right now to actually.
So, slide fourteen. Do you, I mean, and, and Derek, you might know this, because this is a building code question. I think, I think I do, but I certainly will defer to, to whether you have a, a sense of this. But a spiral staircase doesn't, as I understand it, meet the building code criteria as a legal emergency egress means to the ground, you know, mostly because I believe firefighters and other emergency responders can't easily navigate a spiral staircase with equipment and such. So my understanding, and please let me know if you know, if you know any further, that a spiral staircase, while effective, is not as effective as a larger egress deck and set of stairs that would kind of cure this spiral staircase, which is designed to take up the least amount of space. Anything you can add to that, if you know?
Well, I was told, obviously, yes, you are correct. The bigger, the wider, the better. The more you could, side by side, you know, four feet is better than three feet. It, but it does fall into what is deemed as a, a legal circumference as a five foot radius. The law has not changed on that.
Okay.
Whether, whether they like them or not, it's still approved and they can still be used.
I, I appreciate that. Then I stand corrected and I appreciate your, your candid. Okay, so I don't, I don't have any questions.
Could I, could I jump back in with one more question?
Sure, Mr. Swan.
Kristen, could you put up slide nineteen, one nine, slide nineteen? I, I assume this shows some of the butters decks. I guess my question is, it, it seems to me that you have enough width there. You could still park next to a short deck like this that was supported with posts that went down to the ground. And, and you would have a deck like your neighbor's decks. It wouldn't be as huge, but you would still be able to drive a car next to it, to the right of it, if, if you're drawing on the first page showing the width is correct. So I guess my question is, am I missing something here? Is this not a possibility?
So those, those decks are all anywhere between six to eight feet wide.
Yeah.
So we would not be able to actually park a car next to that based off of where the fence is, or we would have to remove the fence that exists with Middle Street.
Well, could you just go back to the, Kristen, could you just go back to the plot plan there that shows the and, and zoom in on that area? The width seems to be sixteen point nine there. And in fact, the driveway, the driveway, I assume is that kind of light tan area. I mean, if that driveway just moved one foot to the left, I mean, you could squeeze the little deck there to the right. You could kind of your, your utmost outward bound post could be cantilevered a little bit, you know, you could, you didn't, you don't have to put it all the way to the corner of the deck. You could cantilever it a little. I mean, I, I just think there's another solution here with, with a more modest deck that would, would be more like your neighbors. Given the amount of width you have here.
I think the issue here is that you would really have no ability to exit the car on the right hand side.
Well, you'd have two posts there or maybe three posts. You'd have to, you know, pull your car up so that the door could open between the posts. But I, I mean, I'm just asking if you'd considered that.
Yeah, yeah, we, we absolutely did. And it truly does come down to the inability to be able to get out of the car on the right hand side. So people would be able to get out on the driver's side. You would not be able to get out on the passenger's side whatsoever.
Well, if you pulled up right next to a post, but a lot of the doors would be able to, yeah, I don't want to go nitpick you here. I, I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we rounded all of the questions. Were there any other questions from the board before I move to deliberations? Seeing none. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go to deliberations. And Mr. Moore, why don't you kick things off for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's use a phrase that was used earlier by my, one of my colleagues very well. In the abstract, the proposed deck is not necessarily a problem, but when, in looking at this variance, I do think having a deck that big, regardless of the reason, does especially when compared to the other units and this building in general, might have a tough time on hardship and not granting a special privilege of a much larger deck than the other units in the lot, regardless of, of the parking issue. I do agree with my colleague that there might be or, or can be with that space a, a different deck that could be constructed, that would be usable, that wouldn't be granting a special privilege by having much oversized just to accommodate, not just going to accommodate parking where there's a lot of, seems to be a lot of usable space there. And then, and if there was a deck there, it's been done. And if it was that large, I think people would remember it. So I'm having a tough time with the hardship with the granting with special privilege where that deck is much larger than any of the units there. So I'm struggling a little bit on the variance here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swan.
Yeah, I too am struggling. I mean, this drawing, I think, it's, I think it shows that that tan area is like nine feet wide. That's a wide car. I mean, I, I think there's other solutions here. And I think my colleague put it very well about creating a special privilege for this particular unit. So I, I cannot support this project as it's currently proposed. Thank you.
All right, very good. And Mr. Chen?
I guess I agree with my, my two colleagues. I think, like our previous discussion, something a little more modest might have been acceptable. I'm struggling with creating a special privilege. I think Mr. Swan is correct. You could put a smaller deck in and still fit a car between the deck and the fence. So with that said, I would have a hard time supporting this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shannon and Mr. Bennet.
Well, I'm of two minds. I know, and I think it's of some consequence that there was a deck there. I know it doesn't carry the day under our zoning ordinance and what we are tasked to do, but it's a matter of equity and fairness, particularly if, if the deck was part of the original construction, which unfortunately we don't know. So in any event, that, that resonates with me in, in a way. And I have some sympathy for the applicant here trying to go back and what would appear to be install a deck that was originally there and some size. On the other hand, I too am a little distressed by the size of this deck. It seems to be out of proportion with the other decks. And from the street also, I'm not sure it strikes me as being a little lot big, but given where my colleagues are, I, I could, if, if we had a more fulsome support, I, I think I could be persuaded, but given where my colleagues are in this, I think I, I have to come down the same way that the, the unique and rigorous finding that we have to make here to grant a variance just hasn't been demonstrated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennet. So Mr. Lively, Mr. Scanti, so as we've heard, and I'm going to, I, we try to do this as a courtesy to every applicant so that you don't find yourself inadvertently procedurally too far, irrevocably too far down a road where you can't turn back. As you may well know, if the board furthers this, this, you know, this progress, we would go to a vote. And if the vote wasn't favorable on your request, you would be barred for two years without a substantial change to the application from reapplying. And certainly that's an unfair, I think, blind side on anyone. So we, we try to never allow that to be a surprise, but rather take a moment to pump the brakes, as it were, take a pause and a breath and invite you to think about whether you'd like us to consider a continuance for you, which we historically try to do whenever possible, to allow folks to further refine a project, further refine a concept and maybe improve it. You've heard the comments of the board. It seems mathematically, it seems very likely, if not almost mathematically certain, that you would not, if this were to be voted on right now, that you would not have the votes sufficient to, to have a successful application. So rather than us do that, I want to give you the opportunity to request a continuance, maybe take a second pass with some of the comments of the board members in mind about the size, scale and massing of the deck and, and see whether there's a different version of this you'd like to circle back and come back to us with. So with that, Mr. Scanti, Mr. Lively, what are your thoughts?
So I would definitely like to request a continuance on this and utilize some of the feedback, trying to alter the, the deck size and see if there is an ability to move the parking area over slightly, which would allow for the continued parking and some type of altered deck size that would make it more more beneficial for the area and, and for the application.
Okay, so Mr. Lively, we have, it looks like we, we just added one continuance to our January eleventh meeting. I'm happy to add yours to that as well. It seems we have room, but is that enough time for you and Mr. Scanti to revise this, or would you like more time than that?
I think we can do January eleventh. Jeff?
I would actually like to have that moved out by a couple more weeks if possible.
Okay, we have the twenty eighth, I believe. And wait a minute, is the January twenty eighth a meeting date for us, Caitlin?
So December twenty eighth is fall. The next one would be after the January eleventh, the January twenty fifth.
January twenty fifth, that's right. Would January twenty fifth be enough time?
It would. I'm actually out of the area if at all possible. Could we get February?
Sure. What's our first meeting in February, Caitlin?
February eighth.
February eighth, okay. February eighth. Derek, is that okay? Is that good for both of you? Is that, does that work with both of you?
Yeah, I can let Jeff answer if he's going to be out of, out of the area.
Okay.
Yes, that will work.
All right, so February eighth. So thank you, gentlemen, members of the ZBA. We have an advocate request to continue this matter to the hearing of February eighth for further refinement. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Was that?
Swanton.
Mr. Swanton, thank you. Motion's made and seconded. Calling the rule, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon? Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. It's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries and the matter is continued to the meeting of February eighth. Mr. Lively, Mr. Scanti, thank you for your, your time and we'll look forward to seeing you in a couple of months.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet. Take care. Okay, moving to our last public hearing this evening, this is the matter of Sharon Drive LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talamanacosta LLC for the property located at Five Sharon Drive. This is a, an application for, to demolish an existing one-story single-family structure and replace it with a new two-story single-family structure, conforming to all setbacks and lot coverage, but increasing the overall square footage greater than five hundred square feet on a lot non-conforming for the area. May we hear from the applicant, attorney me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Talamanacosta. And with me this evening is the manager of Sharon Drive LLC, who's the owner of the property, Bernard Christopher Jr., and the architect on the project, which is Bernard Christopher. You can go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. As the chair suggested, we're here to remove a pre-existing non-conforming structure, actually the structure's conforming, but it's on a lot that's non-conforming and replace it with a two-story home. The property is located in the R2 zoning district, currently has a one-story ranch-style single-family home on it, which was constructed around nineteen sixty-four. The lot is just shy of the required ten thousand square feet at nine thousand eight hundred twenty-eight. So it's a hundred and ten, a hundred and seventy-two square feet shy of the conformity. Otherwise, the lot is entirely conforming. So, next slide, please. So the proposed to remove and construct a new two-story home, that does not intensify, extend or exacerbate any existing non-conformities. Again, the only non-conformity is lot area. We're also proposing to construct a garage which is attached to the house. And because it's more than five hundred square feet of addition, we're before the board. I might remind the board, and I'm sure many of you already driven up Sharon Drive. Sharon Drive is a, is a transitioning neighborhood in that area off of North Atkinson Street. If you go to the next slide, please. Oops, back up to the site plan, Caitlin. There you go. Thank you. So here's a site plan. And as you can see in the site plan, the darker area is the existing home, the existing ranch-style home. There is no garage on the property. It has a deck. The proposal is to build on the existing footprint and square off that back corner of the house and then add a, an attached garage with a room over. And so this is the proposal. You can see it's built within all of the setback requirements of the lot. And it meets all of the dimensional requirements, but for that lot area being shy a hundred and seventy-two square feet. Next slide, please. Here are the existing conditions of the home. It's a traditional ranch, not unfamiliar on Sharon Drive. Again, as I note, and as Bernie's going to talk about in a little bit, Sharon Drive is transitioning. And many of the ranches have been turned into either extended capes or splits or have been taken down and rebuilt entirely. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bernie and he's going to go through the proposed plans.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Bernard Christopher. I'm the architect on Five Sharon. I'm at sixty-two Brook Farm Road in West Roxbury, Mass. If you can actually go back a couple of slides to the site plan, I think this kind of best illustrates what I'm going to be talking about. So when we first started looking at this project, we looked at a whole bunch of iterations to figure out. You know, as an infill project, we, we obviously, you know, from a market standpoint, we want to stand out, but as an infill, we certainly want to kind of fit in with the, with the existing architecture and what's around and the nature. But as an infill, we certainly want to kind of fit in with the, with the existing architecture and what's around in the neighborhood. So we looked at a whole bunch of different options, and we looked at kind of a sprawling ranch, similar to some of the houses in the neighborhood. And we just felt that we wanted to maintain as much of the property as possible, because you can see in, in the backyard there, there's actually a sloping hill that slopes up to the, the street on the backside there. So we wanted to just kind of maintain as much open space as possible. So that really limited us to kind of building up rather than building out. So if you want to go to the next slide, this is the existing elevations. You can see, as Lisa said, it's a ranch. It's a pretty simple ranch. I mean, it's, it's basically just a side gable. The, the lower left-hand corner there, which is actually the south, that's actually the street-facing facade. So one of the other things we wanted to do is actually create some kind of street frontage and create, you know, a house that kind of can be seen from the street. Now, there's a lot of overgrown landscape, and you can see the house is actually entered from the side. So when you are walking down the street, when you look and you look to the house, you don't really see, you can't really tell what's going on. It looks kind of just like a small little shed. And it's, it doesn't really kind of welcome you as part of the neighborhood. So if you want to jump to the next slide, what we're proposing here is to essentially take that footprint and extrude it up to a second story. And as you saw with the site plan, there was a deck on the side, and there was a driveway with no garage. So we've added a garage, we've maintained that sort of side deck, and made that sort of an open-air pass-through that you could get through the home and get to the out, to the backyard through there, or enter through a side entry into a mudroom. And what we've also done, which you probably couldn't tell from the existing drawings, is that that front facade had a small, had an enclosed deck, which you really, you probably, you wouldn't have been able to tell that. But what we've decided to do is maintain that front porch and open it up and allow it to be kind of part of the front facade and add some curb appeal. If you want to jump to the next slide, these are just some additional back elevations. Essentially, you know, as Lisa mentioned, you know, this is a transitional neighborhood, and there are ranches, there's some expanded ranches, there's some Colonials, there's a whole bunch of even some Victorian, and a bunch of two-story houses around kind of the immediate area. So, you know, with all those different kind of archetypes of different houses, and knowing it's kind of transitional, we wanted to kind of stick to simple forms, simple detailing, not do anything too ornate. We wanted to kind of keep it clean and kind of, and fitting sort of, what, you know, what I would call here is sort of a transitional craftsman in a way, where we're kind of using simple materials, kind of natural materials, and, and, and not really departing too far from what, you know, a ranch is, which is just a simple form of simple materials. You can jump to the next slide, please. So this is the first floor plan. And we've, we've, we will be demoing this all the way down to the foundation. We'll be maintaining the foundation, as Lisa mentioned, in kind of the far-right corner where that living space is labeled. That's where we added in, just kind of filled that in, because that was just a little notch in the back of the house. So it's, we're maintaining essentially, most except for the garage and that one little infill on the first floor. And if you jump to the second floor, to the next slide. So this is the second floor, and as we looked at this, we went through a whole bunch of iterations. And ultimately, we landed on extending out and extending over the garage, just to take advantages as much square foot footage as we could. Because we were maintaining that existing footprint, we wanted to capture as much square footage as possible. And as we're building this house sort of speculative, you know, with the, with the, the elementary school nearby, Bresnahan, and it being kind of a family-oriented neighborhood, we started speculating that this would be a family-oriented house. And, you know, with the sort of open contemporary floor plan on the first floor, we wanted to give some space back upstairs for potential kids' room or kid play area. I mean, I know myself, recently becoming a parent, you know, any extra space you can get is well appreciated. So thinking for a potential buyer, and what we wanted to show you today was the option of extending over the garage, adding more space, giving more space to the upstairs, so we could have three full bedrooms, bath, laundry, and some extra bonus space as well as a large master. And you can jump to the next slide. So the next bunch of slides, we can kind of flip through quickly. This'll give you a flavor for the neighborhood. This is at the corner at North Atkinson. It's kind of a large, kind of stick Victorian. Sorry, go ahead. You can keep going. The next, this is directly adjacent to it. It's about a 24 and, 2,400 square foot sprawling ranch. They built over the garage as well, which I think you're gonna see in most of these houses, that that is kind of a theme. A lot of people were taking advantage of, of building over those garages. And that's ultimately why we went in that direction. Go to the next. This is probably one of the more kind of untouched houses. It's a little bit further down the street from where we are. It's not really visible from where we are, even though it's kind of diagonal from where we are. You can go to the next one. This is just looking down the streets, you can kind of get a flavor. And it should be noted that this street is uphill. There's a hill directly behind where you see that house on the left, which is, would be the direct neighbor. And this is also kind of working uphill as you go uphill. And then you can go to the, the next one, which is a split. And then the next, which is directly across the street, if you want to flip to the next one. And you can see, this is kind of a modified colonial where they expanded up and dormed off and built some more space up in the roof line. And then also, similar to what we're, we're trying to do, is added that extra space over the garage. And then the final, or you can just flip through the next two quickly. This, the house, if you want to go back one, I'm sorry. The house here on the left, that is our property. And you can kind of tell already that, you know, there's a driveway on the side. You can't really tell what's going on with the house. It really has no curb appeal or no, no street value to the neighborhood. And then to the next one, you'll see, this is as you get up the hill, there's a bunch of houses like this, which are sort of that step-back colonial two-story, which has a similar kind of height and volume in the main portion of the house.
Thank you, Bernie. And so if you can go to the next slide, Caitlin, thank you. So this is a mind maps overview of the, of the footprints, essentially the bird's-eye view of the structures in the neighborhood. You'll see that as Bernie went through the, the structures already, most of them have attached garages. There's one or two that don't. Ours is one of them, and then directly like diagonal to it is another. But most all of them have attached garages, which of course increases the footprint on the house. But in this instance, everything is conforming dimensionally as proposed. So the criteria under section 9B is whether or not there's any new non-conformities created. And in this instance, there are no new non-conformities created. In fact, as I noted earlier, the lot is entirely conforming, but for that 172-square-foot shortfall of the lot area. The next is that the change won't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure. And as we noted, Sharon Drive is a neighborhood in transition and has a number of different types, both style and size of homes. There are many that have extensions of garages and over garages and decks. Numerous of them include enclosed porches and partially finished basements. Further, given the topographical, topographical changes of Sharon Drive, where it intersects North Atkinson Street, all the way back to the cul-de-sac, as Bernie suggested, it goes up in a hill, and many of them you can't see from the main area, which is North Atkinson Street. As we noted earlier, we're gonna be keeping the existing foundation squaring off that back corner, and then adding the garage built with a connection over. The two largest homes on Sharon Drive are actually directly next to Three Sharon Drive and Eight Sharon Drive, so they're right next to where the proposed structure is going to go. And certainly, the neighborhood extends on to North Atkinson Street and Columbus Avenue in the rear, which is the rear street that Bernie had pointed out behind the house. And those houses are all much larger than some of the smaller ranches on Sharon Drive. So we believe that based upon the fault, based upon everything that we have presented, and the fact that the proposal meets all the dimensional requirements, but for that lot area, that the board can find that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And we'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. Thank you, Mr. Christopher. We will close that portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. Putting up the slide again on public comment, anyone who wishes to be heard, just raise your hand. We'll recognize you. Seeing no hands, going once, going twice, I am going to close that portion of the public hearing and go right to questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, and just because of tiredness, tough to see right now. I wondered if you could give the square footage of the new proposed structure?
Sure, the living, living area, right? 3,053 square feet. So the first floor is 1,100, well, just over 1,197. And then the second floor is 1,856, because it goes out over the garage.
Okay. And what was the height again of the structure?
25, 8 and 3/4.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Swanton.
No questions.
Very good, Mr. Shannon.
I don't think I have any questions. Good presentation. I did like the comment made by Bernie that he didn't want to depart too much from a ranch, a 1,300-square-foot ranch that is now well over 3,000 square foot two-story. But nonetheless, good presentation, a beautiful building. No questions.
Yeah. Mr. Bennet?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I don't have any questions either, other than I, I too, I admire the architecture. I love the, you know, I, I love how it's still reminiscent of a ranch. You know, it's obviously larger, but it's somehow the scale just seems appropriate. But thank you for the presentation. Closing, any further questions before I close? Closing questions, we'll go into deliberations, and we will begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have wonderful presentation. Yeah, beautiful home. Looks like a real improve, obviously a real improvement, says Captain Obvious. But no addition of new non-conformity, clearly, and complies with all the setbacks. And the only other thing we have to find, if there was a problem being more detrimental to the neighborhood from a size-scale massing and the placement on the lot, I'm pretty much using the same footprint, but just going up and not outrageous in height, in my opinion, compared to some of the homes in the area. For those reasons, I can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I mean, we're not here to comment on architecture. I mean, I, I like the one that we turned down earlier in the evening a little better, but it's all about the neighborhood. And I think this particular street can handle the massing in this example. So I too can support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
I agree with my colleagues. Again, I think this neighborhood can support the massing, and I can support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Mr. Bennet?
I will echo the comments of my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And I, I agree as well, and I feel that the applicant has done a nice job with the application. I feel the application satisfies the criteria that we have to, that we must, as a board, find. And let me just pull that up real quick. I had that in front of me a second ago. So since it's a special permit for non-conformities, we as a board must find the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing, non-conforming user structure. I too, I feel that, and I think my colleagues have shared this, that, that this is certainly better, much less detrimental, much less substantially more detrimental. So I feel that the applicant certainly satisfied that criteria. And we do have considered as a board the factors such as massing scale, volume, and location, and find that this is an appropriate massing scale, volume in its current location. And I'll also note that the application, the application appears to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance, but as per, as per OPD, they, they will include a standard boilerplate. We, we should include a standard boilerplate condition that the applicant shall comply with all tree and sidewalk ordinances in any motion to approve. But with that, I too can support it. So any further deliberations before I close? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. And do we have a motion to approve? Thank you, Bud. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
All right, motions made by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll. Calling the roll, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, and the motion carries. The application is approved. Good luck to Mr. Christopher and Attorney Mead. Thank you for, for the presentation.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
You have a great evening as well.
All right.
Members of the ZBA, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We can now close public hearings and open up business meeting. We have only one matter, which is the approval of the minutes from Ms. Gretchen Joy of the meeting of November 23rd, 2021. Do any members of the ZBA have any comments, changes, revisions, or corrections?
I, I do. I have a couple little typos.
All right, let's, let's hear it.
On page four, the, the, after the big space up there, there's a paragraph in the third line of the paragraph. It's would to be converted. It's just, get rid of the word "to," should be would be converted. Then down at the bottom of the page, the very last line, it says would, would detrimental. I think it's supposed to be would be detrimental. On the next page, the third to last paragraph, the large paragraph, the ones that starts out, Mr. Swanton. The fourth to last line starts out would larger, and it's supposed to be would be larger. And then the second to last line, Mr. Bennet said he would like to time. I think he would like the time or just like time, but the word "to" is kind of excess, you know, shouldn't be there. And then on page six, under the Raymond Johnson, 20 Lafayette Street, the first line, the applicant is proposing to construction. It's supposed to be construct. And then two paragraphs further down, it's second last line, said it would not detrimental to the neighborhood, missing the word "be," not be detrimental. I hate to point out all those things, because in general, by the way, I mean, I've taken minutes before. You're doing a wonderful job taking minutes. I really appreciate it. But anyway, those are my six little comments.
Don't worry. Is there anyone else? Any other comments?
He got all the ones that I saw, so.
I'm gonna echo Mr. Swanton's comment, and I, I think everyone is likely to share this, you know, resoundingly. Gretchen, you, you do a wonderful job. It's tireless and unheralded. But we greatly appreciate you writing down the silly things we say all day and night and keeping it so meticulous. You know, I'm glad I'm not doing it, because I could tell you, Mr. Swan would have a field day with my attempt. Keep notes, you know, but thank you for everything that you do for us. And that goes double and triply to Caitlin and Andy. So I think that, I don't have any updates from the chair. Andy, do you, do you have anything you want to?
No, we haven't approved him yet, though.
I move to approve the minutes.
Oh, my apologies. I jumped right past that. So although, yeah, all those, so motions been made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye. You opposed? No, the eyes have it, the motion carries, the minutes are approved as amended. Thank you, Mr. Swanton, for going through those so carefully as well.
That was just Google documents. If you download it, Google documents, they'll just jump off the page at you. So I hate, hate to avoid my secrets, but.
All right, Mr. Porter, anything you wish to share with us of note?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Chair. I'll be brief. I don't want to take any time at this late hour, but I will send something tomorrow morning to you, some more information on the recent discussions the councils had on short-term rental units and their regulation. The recent discussions, I think I had advised the board, and with an email some time ago, that they were shifting gears from just a license for those uses to a special permit as well. And because of the number of them in Newburyport, we can, you can sort of do some Airbnb searching on your own if you'd like in the coming days, but it might be worth just thinking as a board member about how that process would work for you. You know, I guess I'll send the language, but what the process would look like for you, what the criteria for review would be, any concerns you would have about it, including, and we addressed this concern, the office did with the council. uh, the office did with the council, the, the potential for the staff and the boards to need additional time to handle an influx of applications. Um, so just think about that, uh, I'll send information to you. Um, there's an area of regulation that is not covered right now in zoning, and it needs to be filled. Um, but there's some, um, particulars that you may wanna take a look at and weigh in on, since, uh, as currently drafted, you would be the special permit granting authority for this new, uh, use category that has been taking place in Newburyport, but, uh, has not been specifically authorized under zoning.
Andy, do you know whether they, um, the council has made a revision so as to include or exclude the licensing spe- well, the special permit component to, um, short-term rentals that are currently on Plum Island? Is it citywide? I know that, uh, there's exclusionary language in some of the previous
Yeah.
Just the licensing, but I, I know that a majority of our short-term rentals are on Plum Island, so the in, the
Yeah.
or the influx will be much more powerful if it includes Plum Island, and it'd be good for us to just know so we can anticipate that.
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, my recollection is the most recent version, uh, requires the license, uh, but does not require any, uh, special permit for the Plum Island piece. Uh, it's really, uh, and I shouldn't even say license, it's really the registration, um, that they were, uh, wanting to address on the Plum Island side. So, um, there's some other criteria that would apply to the land side, um, short-term rent units that would not apply to the island, but, um, but again, I'll send out the, um, I wanna do is I'll send out the original version that they were looking at, um, and the newest version that, that the council has carried over into their next session, so that's the one to take a look at, but if you wanted the original to take a look at, um, there are also various different meetings that have taken place uh, for the last couple of weeks or months, uh, in council committee or, or in weeks back with the planning board, um, where you can kind of hear some of the dialogue about, um, you know, the rationale for the ordinance, uh, what issues are intended to be addressed, um, how the short-term rent units are broken down into subcategories and things like that, so. Uh, but again, I'll send that out to you, and then we're happy to discuss further, or, uh, you can certainly tune in. Um, I presume there'll be actually another joint public hearing with the planning board in January, uh, before the council moves to adopt.
Thank you, and I, and I point out to the rest of the, uh, the members, um, Mr. Swanton and I were in attendance in council chambers at the last um, uh, hearing of the, uh, planning and development, uh, subcommittee as a city council. Uh, we both spoke, uh, and, uh, you know, it was, it was certainly a, um, you know, a not ready for prime time yet, uh, type of, uh, you know, draft language, and there was a lot of, uh, concern by members of the council expressed in trying to figure this out, but, um, I can tell you that what we learned at that subcommittee was that the, um, the numbers of short-term rentals on Plum Island, you know, farly out, far outweigh the numbers, uh, the mainland, and I think that if the special permit piece is limited to the mainland short-term rentals, that's actually good for us in terms of volume and a, and an ability to sort of carefully feather this into our docket without, you know, without it swamping the canoe, so to speak, but we'll wait to see what Andy sends us, and Andy, thank you for, uh, you know, for keeping vigil on that, uh, for us, and anything else, uh, or anyone else before we, we all head to bed? All right, we have a motion to, uh, to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded, all, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the eyes have it, and the motion carries. Uh, thank you all very much. Have a great evening, and, uh, we'll see you next time.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.